Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Education meeting, a regular meeting for March 26, 2024. And I would like to call up some children from our community who will be helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance, the Mission and Vision Community Pledge. Myella Schneiderman, Sidney Goldman, Gia Ives, and Dylan Etteri. If you could please... You guys can stand right there. Do you want to leave this in the Pledge of Allegiance to start? Get ready, please rise.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and guys, stay up here. Are you holding in your hand the Mission and Vision Statement?
The BHUSD Mission Statement, Vision Statement, and Values. Mission: Educational Excellence. Vision: Our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Wonderful, okay. It's hope. Yep, stay close to it. Okay, and Community Pledge?
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other in our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members. Honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you so much. Noah, would you like to...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. The Report of Closed Session Action will be subject to Dr. Bregge's arrival.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are delighted to present to you the Teacher-Student Spotlight, Hawthorne School Butterfly Project with Ms. Kaber.
Hello, Board of Education. Thank you so much for having us. It's my pleasure to welcome our fifth grade team. Part of our fifth grade team is Leat Caines, Tanya Guerra, Isabella Kaufman, and Lindsay Holberg. Incredible teachers who are leading us through a project that we call the Butterfly Project. I think it's our third year. Ms. Caines will go into it more, but it's our third year with the project. It's connected to students around the world, where students learn about the Holocaust and around children whose lives were lost during the Holocaust. And every student of ours makes one butterfly in remembrance for one life that was lost. So we're just working our way onto the Zoom link, and then we have a presentation for you. So give us one second as I introduce Ms. Caines.
We're very quick tonight.
No problem. Can you see it? Just one more second. Can you let me share? Done, sorry. Yes. I put away my volume.
There we go.
Okay, there we go. It should have mattered. So I'm going to introduce Ms. Caines, who's going to introduce everyone now.
Hi. It's an honor to be here for the third year presenting about the Butterfly Project. The Butterfly Project is a call to action through education, the arts, and memorial making. As educators, it is our responsibility to learn from the Holocaust and teach our children about the dangers of hatred, bigotry, and discrimination. Every year, the fifth grade team and administration look to deepen the learning for our students. In addition to creating their own butterflies with Ms. Fetterman and watching the award-winning documentary, this year, the students had the opportunity to attend the Holocaust Museum of L.A., listen to the story of a survivor, and read the book Number the Stars. Every year, I'm amazed by the dedication, passion, and interest of our students in this project-based learning. I'm honored to be part of the Hawthorne and Beverly Hills community for creating such an inspirational and beautiful piece of art that will continue to be our legacy. A huge thank you to Sarah, Kevin, and Christine for their support in this project. A huge thank you to Elizabeth Fetterman for creating these beautiful butterflies. And a huge thank you to the fifth grade teachers, Bella, Lindsay, and Tanya, for taking the time to bring this project to their classroom. And we have four fifth graders. We have Myella, Sidney, Gia, and Dylan, who are going to share their experience.
Hi, my name is Gia Ives, and I'm in Ms. Guerra's class at Hawthorne Elementary. I am here tonight to share the importance of the Butterfly Project. The goal of the Butterfly Project is to remember the 1.5 million children who died during the Holocaust. To begin the project, each student was given a biography card of a child who died. My bio card was for Joelle Liverman. We then had the opportunity in Ms. Fetterman's art class to create a butterfly to represent our person from the bio card. To honor Joelle, I painted my butterfly blue and white, reflecting the Jewish colors. We created butterflies because butterflies resemble freedom and hope. By creating a butterfly, our fifth grade class was able to participate in a mitzvah, a good deed to honor the children who died based on their religion, identity, and being different. To continue our learning, our grade is also reading the story Number the Stars. By reading this story, it further educates us about how a young girl felt during the Holocaust. I believe that everyone should participate in the Butterfly Project. We all need to learn how to accept others and be kind to all.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello, I'm Dylan Etteri. In 1938, out of Hitler's invasion of Czechoslovakia and the Sudinian land, uprooted over 3 million individuals who had recently gained independence from another oppressive regime. During a visit to the Holocaust Museum with my fifth grade class, we learned about the rise of Nazi Germany and the propaganda they used. The cruel things done by the Nazis should never be repeated. While this was a horrible time in our history, it is important to remember the people who suffered this. We must learn through the past to ensure that no group of people is ever targeted again based on race, religion, or identity. To make sure history is never repeated, we must learn from the past and share the stories of those who did not survive. The Butterfly Project teaches us about the horrible events of the Holocaust and the importance of turning a horrible event into something positive and inspiring. It is our responsibility to make sure that this never happens again. We can learn to accept each other's differences and hold people accountable for their actions. Our fifth grade class had the honor of being the last class to put up butterflies at Hawthorne and add two hundred...
Hi, my name is Gia Ives, and I'm in Ms. Guerra's class at Hawthorne Elementary. I am here tonight to share the importance of the Butterfly Project. The goal of the Butterfly Project is to remember the 1.5 million children who died during the Holocaust. To begin the project, each student was given a biography card of a child who died. My bio card was for Joelle Liverman. We then had the opportunity in Ms. Fetterman's art class to create a butterfly to represent our person from the bio card. To honor Joelle, I painted my butterfly blue and white, reflecting the Jewish colors. We created butterflies because butterflies resemble freedom and hope. By creating a butterfly, our fifth grade class was able to participate in a mitzvah, a good deed to honor the children who died based on their religion, identity, and being different. To continue our learning, our grade is also reading the story Number the Stars. By reading this story, it further educates us about how a young girl felt during the Holocaust. I believe that everyone should participate in the Butterfly Project. We all need to learn how to accept others and be kind to all.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dylan Etteri. In 1938, out of Hitler's invasion of Czechoslovakia and the Sudinian land, uprooted over 3 million individuals who had recently gained independence from another oppressive regime. During a visit to the Holocaust Museum with my fifth grade class, we learned about the rise of Nazi Germany and the propaganda they used. The cruel things done by the Nazis should never be repeated. While this was a horrible time in our history, it is important to remember the people who suffered this. We must learn through the past to ensure that no group of people is ever targeted again based on race, religion, or identity. To make sure history is never repeated, we must learn from the past and share the stories of those who did not survive. The Butterfly Project teaches us about the horrible events of the Holocaust and the people who suffered. It taught us the importance of being an upstander and accepting each other's differences. It is our responsibility to share these stories and bring out a positive change in the world.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Myella, and I'm a fifth creator at Hawthorne. The Butterfly Project provides students with the opportunity to learn about the past and create a better future. My classmates and I were so blessed to go on the field trip to the Holocaust Museum of L.A. and listen to the survivors and the tour guides. We heard the stories of Anne Frank, Carol Roth, and Gabriela Corrin. Listening to these stories was heartbreaking. It was challenging to hear all the horrible events that happened during this time. We learned about the terrible things that were done to people who looked different or had a different religion. After the museum, we watched a documentary, The Butterfly Project. We learned about how the project was started and the importance of turning a horrible event into something positive and inspiring. It is our responsibility to make sure that this never happens again. We can learn to accept each other's differences and hold people accountable for their actions. Our fifth grade class had the honor of being the last class to put up butterflies at Hawthorne and add two hundred...
Hi, my name is Gia Ives, and I'm in Ms. Guerra's class at Hawthorne Elementary. I am here tonight to share the importance of the Butterfly Project. The goal of the Butterfly Project is to remember the 1.5 million children who died during the Holocaust. To begin the project, each student was given a biography card of a child who died. My bio card was for Joelle Liverman. We then had the opportunity in Ms. Fetterman's art class to create a butterfly to represent our person from the bio card. To honor Joelle, I painted my butterfly blue and white, reflecting the Jewish colors. We created butterflies because butterflies resemble freedom and hope. By creating a butterfly, our fifth grade class was able to participate in a mitzvah, a good deed to honor the children who died based on their religion, identity, and being different. To continue our learning, our grade is also reading the story Number the Stars. By reading this story, it further educates us about how a young girl felt during the Holocaust. I believe that everyone should participate in the Butterfly Project. We all need to learn how to accept others and be kind to all.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dylan Etteri. In 1938, out of Hitler's invasion of Czechoslovakia and the Sudinian land, uprooted over 3 million individuals who had recently gained independence from another oppressive regime. During a visit to the Holocaust Museum with my fifth grade class, we learned about the rise of Nazi Germany and the propaganda they used. The cruel things done by the Nazis should never be repeated. While this was a horrible time in our history, it is important to remember the people who suffered this. We must learn through the past to ensure that no group of people is ever targeted again based on race, religion, or identity. To make sure history is never repeated, we must learn from the past and share the stories of those who did not survive. The Butterfly Project teaches us about the horrible events of the Holocaust and the importance of turning a horrible event into something positive and inspiring. It is our responsibility to make sure that this never happens again. We can learn to accept each other's differences and hold people accountable for their actions. Our fifth grade class had the honor of being the last class to put up butterflies at Hawthorne and add two hundred...
And I would like to call up some children from our community who will be helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance, the Mission and Vision Community Pledge. Myella Schneiderman, Sidney Goldman, Gia Ives, and Dylan Etteri. If you could please. You guys can stand right there. You want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to start? Get ready, please rise.
I pledge an ex-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You may proceed to sit.
Okay, and guys stay up here. Do you, are you holding in your hand the mission and vision statement?
BHUSD mission statement, vision statement and values. Mission: Educational Excellence. Vision: Our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Wonderful, okay. Yep, stay close to it. Okay, and community pledge?
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other in our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members. Honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you so much. Noah, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. The report of closed session action will be subject to Dr. Breggy's arrival.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are delighted to present to you the Teacher-Student Spotlight Hawthorne School Butterfly Project with Ms. Kaber.
Hello, Board of Education. Thank you so much for having us. It's my pleasure to welcome our 5th grade team. Part of our 5th grade team is Leatte Canes, Tanya Guerra, Isabella Kaufman, and Lindsay Holberg. Incredible teachers who are leading us through a project that we call the Butterfly Project. I think it's our 3rd year. Ms. Canes will go into it more, but it's our 3rd year with the project. It's connected to students around the world where students learn about the Holocaust and around children whose lives were lost during the Holocaust. And every student of ours makes one butterfly in remembrance for one life that was lost. So we're just working our way onto the Zoom link, and then we have a presentation for you, so give us one second as I introduce Ms. Canes. We're very quick tonight.
No problem.
Can you see it? Just one more second. Can you let me share? Done, sorry? I put away my volume.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, there we go. It should have mattered. So I'm going to introduce Ms. Canes, who's going to introduce everyone now. Sorry? Hi. It's an honor to be here for the 3rd year presenting about the Butterfly Project. The Butterfly Project is a call to action through education, the arts, and memorial-making. As educators, it is our responsibility to learn from the Holocaust and teach our children about the dangers of hatred, bigotry, and discrimination. Every year, the 5th grade team and administration look to deepen the learning for our students. In addition to creating their own butterflies with Ms. Federman and watching the award-winning documentary, this year, the students had the opportunity to attend the Holocaust Museum of L.A., listen to the story of a survivor, and read the book Number the Stars. Every year, I'm amazed by the dedication, passion, and interest of our students in this project-based learning. I'm honored to be part of the Hawthorne and Beverly Hills community for creating such an inspirational and beautiful piece of art that will continue to be our legacy. A huge thank you to Sarah, Kevin, and Christine for their support in this project. A huge thank you to Elizabeth Federman for creating these beautiful butterflies. And a huge thank you to the 5th grade teachers, Bella, Lindsay, and Tanya, for taking the time to bring this project to their classroom. And we have four 5th graders. We have Myella, Sidney, Gia, and Dylan, who are going to share their experience.
Hi, my name is Gia Ives, and I'm in Ms. Guerra's class at Hawthorne Elementary. I am here tonight to share the importance of the Butterfly Project. The goal of the Butterfly Project is to remember the 1.5 million children who died during the Holocaust. To begin the project, each student was given a biography card of a child who died. My bio card was for Joelle Liverman. We then had the opportunity in Ms. Federman's art class to create a butterfly to represent our person from the bio card. To honor Joelle, I painted my butterfly blue and white, reflecting the Jewish colors. We created butterflies because butterflies resemble freedom and hope. By creating a butterfly, our 5th grade class was able to participate in a mitzvah, a good deed to honor the children who died based on their religion, identity, and being different. To continue our learning, our grade is also reading the story Number the Stars. By reading this story, it further educates us about how a young girl felt during the Holocaust. I believe that everyone should participate in the Butterfly Project. We all need to learn how to accept others and be kind to all.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dylan Etteri. In 1938, out of Hitler's invasion of Czechoslovakia and the Sudinian land, uprooted over 3 million individuals who had recently gained independence from another oppressive regime. During a visit to the Holocaust Museum with my 5th grade class, we learned about the rise of Nazi Germany and the propaganda they used. The cruel things done by the Nazis should never be repeated. While this was a horrible time in our history, it is important to remember the people who suffered this. We must learn through the past to ensure that no group of people is ever targeted again based on race, religion, or identity. To make sure history is never repeated, we must learn from the past and share the stories of those who did not survive. The Butterfly Project teaches us about the horrible events of the Holocaust and the people who suffered. It taught us the importance of being an upstander and accepting each other's differences. It is our responsibility to share these stories and bring out a positive change to the world.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Myella, and I'm a fifth grader at Hawthorne. The Butterfly Project provides students with the opportunity to learn about the past and create a better future. My classmates and I were so blessed to go on the field trip to the Holocaust Museum of L.A. and listen to their survivors and the tour guides. We heard the stories of Anne Frank, Carol Roth, and Gabriela Corrin. Listening to these stories was heartbreaking. It was challenging to hear all the horrible events that happened during this time. We learned about the terrible things that were done to people who looked different or had a different religion. After the museum, we watched a documentary, The Butterfly Project. We learned about how the people, we learned about, we learned about how the project was started and the importance of turning a horrible event into something positive and inspiring. It is our responsibility to make sure that this never happens again. We can learn to accept each other's differences and hold people accountable for their actions. Our 5th grade class had the honor of being the last class to put up butterflies at Hawthorne and add 263 butterflies to the 1.5 million children who sadly lost their lives during the Holocaust.
Hello, my name is Sidney Goldman, and I'm a 5th grader at Hawthorne Elementary School. My 5th grade class and I recently visited the Holocaust Museum of L.A. Before the field trip, I expected it to be sad, but it was more than that. It was fascinating. At the museum, we spent the first part of the morning viewing the various exhibits with the tour guide, and then had the honor of listening to Carol Roth's story, a survivor of the Holocaust. Before I entered the room for Carol's story, I was anxious but also curious, so I asked lots of questions to myself. Was I ready to hear this? Was I ready to meet Carol? Was I ready to step into history? We all took our seats. Carol stepped into the room. She started to talk about her life and how when she was just a little girl, her mother was taken away to a concentration camp while getting milk for Carol. Her mother never came back. Then, it was just her father and, just her and her father. Her father managed to hide Carol with a loving Christian family. Carol and her father sent letters to each other all the time. However, this ended when her father was also sent to a concentration camp. While Carol was living with her adopted family, she faced discrimination and hate from others all because she was Jewish, and that made Carol feel unwanted. Carol lived happily with her adopted family, however, she lost her mother, father, and brother. Carol is still looking for her brother to this very day. She hasn't found him yet and doesn't know if he's alive, but she still has hope. Carol shared what she and her family went through and what she did to stay alive. I was fortunate to hear her story. I had so many questions for her. How did she feel? How did this impact the way she thought of the world? Carol shared that one time, she had to hide under a house with mice, unable to make a noise to avoid being sent to the concentration camps. Carol got spit on, she got hurt, she lost friends, and she experienced so many more awful experiences all because of her religion. While Carol was speaking, it was like history coming alive. It was something that was unbelievable. It wasn't something you could easily brush off because it wouldn't get off your mind. It was a horrific event that Carol went through, and I would think everyone in that room could feel the way I was feeling while she was speaking. I had mixed emotions. I was sad but happy I got to hear her story. I was furious that this could happen to someone. The Butterfly Project and Carol's story is extremely important to me. It has encouraged me to learn about our history. I have started to read stories from the Holocaust, both in and out of the classroom. I will continue to honor the survivors and those who died in the Holocaust. I will cherish the moments I had with Carol. Carol made me feel so grateful and to never take anything for granted again. I will continue to live by these words and share their stories.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Very moving. Go around, some board member comments.
Go ahead. First of all, I apologize for coming in late, but from what I did hear of you guys, you were all very, very impressive speakers. Thank you for coming and sharing. Yeah, I'm really, really impressed by your reflection of the experience, and I'm happy that even though it was really harrowing and sort of a tough subject to deal with, that you all felt you learned a lot from it and were able to reflect upon it as it applied to sort of your own guys' experiences, young children. So I'm really, really happy you had that opportunity, and thank you again for coming to share with us.
Mr. Margot?
The 3rd time, I think the project has never meant more than it does now with what's happening in the world. So it resonated a little bit differently than it has in the past, to me at least. And I thank you. You all were very well-spoken, very poised, very prepared. And what makes me proud to be a board member of a school district that has students of your character. So thank you.
I agree. I'm very impressed with all of you. I really love hearing how you spoke about each of your experiences, you know, what your trepidation might be about going, or whether or not you were ready to learn about it or to face the situations that the Holocaust Museum was telling the story. And I also really love that it also gave you the desire to want to learn more and to continue to learn. I think that's really what we're really trying to do here, is to not only expose you and to help you ask those questions and answer those questions for yourself, but also then to continue to learn and share that information that you've learned with other people. Because not everybody has that experience that you had, and now you can be ambassadors as well yourself and help to share that information with other people. So thank you for doing it, and thank you for the mitzvah.
I love having you guys here. So thank you for joining us, and thank you for taking the time to prepare. Your statements were all beautiful. And last year, when 5th grade students joined us, they recited part of the butterfly poem, which made me very emotional. And I just commend you guys for how composed you are and how you're processing this information. It's really heavy stuff, and I'm proud of you. And I, you know, everybody in their statements shared that this is about all kinds of hatred. And I love that you're having the opportunity, you know, to really apply this to what's happening in the world, and hopefully that helps you guys be better friends to one another. So thank you for being here, and thank you to the 5th grade teachers for supporting these kids and giving them the opportunity and being there for them as they deal with this heavy stuff.
Well, my colleagues have spoken so eloquently about this presentation. There's nothing left for me to say, is that I'm just going to say, I am so proud of each and every one of you and the way you represent your classmates and how the presentations just were so wonderful. You all got something different out of this. You all approached it a little differently, and I loved the thinking that you put into this, because it shows that you were really thinking about what this meant to you. So thank you again for being here tonight. I really loved it. And I love the fact that you're continuing to study and learn more to carry on into the future. So keep up the good work. I look forward to seeing you in the future, and your presentations were wonderful.
Thank you, colleagues. Yes, beautiful. And it's really something to think about, you know, looking at the four of you up here and your teachers, and how beautiful all of you are, and of course, the symbolism of a beautiful butterfly. And then we just think about the absolute atrocities and horrific nature of the Holocaust. Of course, it wasn't just Jewish people, but a lot of people who were exterminated just for what they believed in, or their religion, or a whole host of things. Truly awful, and it's really great to see the other side, which is the beauty that you guys represent in your youth, and optimism, and everything you had to share. So thank you so much. A round of applause.
Thank you so much for having us. We also wanted to make sure that you knew that all four schools participated in this in different ways. And a huge thank you to this 5th grade team for bringing it to our school district and sort of spreading it out to everyone. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Dr. Breg if he wants to come on down. He was on official business, so we thank you.
Our fearless leader is back.
Our fearless leader is back.
Hello. It's not the same without you.
Yes. We're moving into public comment, and I understand-
Do you want to check on number 6 first before we move?
Any report for closed session?
Thank you, Dr. Stern. I wasn't in closed session, but to my knowledge, that there is no actionable items to report out this evening.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. So for public comment, I'd like to ask, we have two individuals here in person, Marina Moser, if she would like to come up, please. And you have 3 minutes. And I guess you can start. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, school board members. My name is Marina Moser, and my child is a student in Ms. Amy Dido's TK class at Horace Mann Elementary School. Ms. Dido joined Horace Mann this past school year following a 28-year career as a teacher. I'm here to ask that the members of this board reconsider its decision not to renew Ms. Dido's employment contract. For background, this past year, I regularly interacted with Ms. Dido and watched her in action, as a room parent and a volunteer in her classroom, as well as through phone conversations, emails, and informal meetings after class. I want to add that I have previously worked and volunteered as a teaching assistant at a nearby preschool, and I'm currently taking early childhood education classes. My interactions and observations of Ms. Dido made me a strong supporter of hers as a teacher. My daughter blossomed academically and socially this past year because of Ms. Dido's guidance, encouragement, and teaching ability. Ms. Dido was honest and direct in her assessment of my daughter, pointing out my daughter's strengths as well as areas of improvement. And she has shown the same interest and dedication in the other students as well. I wish I had more time to share with you examples of her commitment to her students. However, one particular situation stands out to me that demonstrates her quick thinking, empathy, and handling of a scary situation. Last December, a threat was called into Horace Mann during school hours. Police were sent to the school to conduct a room-by-room search for anything dangerous, forcing students to shelter in place. Ms. Dido engaged and distracted the children with activities, so they were unaware anything out of the ordinary was happening. She was, she also informed parents of the situation, assuring us all that all children were safe, both physically and emotionally. I can tell you that all parents I spoke with were impressed by how she kept our children safe and at the same time eased our concerns in a specifically frightening time. I believe Beverly Hills School District would benefit from Ms. Dido's continued employment as a teacher. Respectfully, I urge you to reconsider your decision and bring her back, so that future BHUSD students will benefit and grow as my daughter has. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would like to ask Monique Winans to come up. And you have 3 minutes.
That was close, Monique Winans.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Hi, board. Thank you, Mr. Breggy. Wonderful to see you.
You too.
I am Monique Winans. Myself and my husband Marvin have been in the district with our children. Three of our four children are here. Been in the district for six years now. Our oldest son Marvin is in 7th grade at the middle school. Miranda is in 4th grade at Horace Mann. Marissa is at 2nd grade at Horace Mann. And Maximus is his first year at school, TK at Horace Mann with Ms. Amy Dido as well. I'm here to echo what Marina has said, and she said it so elegantly and so well. Ms. Dido has been an absolute blessing to our son. I was very hesitant about starting TK this year, especially with the extra hour, because you know, the extra hour added on. It's like this too, like, and then we get to the classroom, and it's a brand-new teacher, you know, nobody knows about, there's no background, we don't have a background on her, and so I was concerned. But she ended up being, we find out she's a 20, almost 30-year teacher, and her experience showed throughout the process. Okay, she has been excellent with my son, like Marina's mentioned, mentioning strengths and weaknesses, helping us to really consider things for him. I've been in the classroom as well, and also a room parent, and seen how she's worked with children. You know, you can only imagine, you know, 22, 4, and 5-year-olds, how much fun that is, and how interesting that gets, and she handles it beautifully and wonderfully. She speaks with the parents so very well, communicates with us. I was looking forward to her being in our district and being able to be a teacher for many years because of what she was able to do with our son, what we saw with our children and other children in the classroom. So when we heard last week that she was being let go, it was shocking and concerning, because I know we have an excellent board here that makes excellent decisions for our district, you care about our students, and you want the best people there. She's one of the best people. Without question, she's one of the best people. And my husband even wrote a letter as well, which I'll have time, hopefully I'll get through it to read it, but he wanted to express his, you know, concern as well and his encouragement to reconsider. He said, "I heard that Ms. Dido is being asked to leave. This is a terrible idea. She is literally one of the very best teachers my children have had since we have been in this district. She is caring, very communicative, and my child Max loves her. I want to make it known that this is a very bad decision for our school. Instead of letting her go, she should be given an opportunity to lead. The school would be much better if there were more teachers with her, with her attention to detail and loving kindness. She speaks to the parents all the time, gives pertinent and timely information, and we are better for it. I am never concerned about Max with her. She feels like family. Please, please reconsider." So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Items E and F will be pulled for discussion only. Item I for a vote. Something different?
I just want to understand the distinction and make sure we're on the same page.
When we pull something for discussion only, it will get voted on with the entire consent calendar, but it can still be discussed outside of the consent calendar. So it means the votes that are within the consent calendar sit, you know, stay with that item, and then item I will get pulled out separately completely for a vote and discussion.
Sure, thank you.
I need a second.
Oh, I'll second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So I can start the discussion?
With E and F, you can start discussion.
Okay, yeah. So a little bit of background here. With 9E and 9F, I love the fact that we do retain services from mental health professionals outside who come and help us for a variety of reasons. I know that because time is of the essence, and there's some specific language that goes along with perhaps a settlement, I don't want to delay anything on this. However, I just would like to know, the question I have is, some of the scope of services that belong to these contracts, I think, for example, I would recommend that, since these outside individuals are doing an independent assessment for our students, you know, which is taxpayer dollars generally, it seems to me that they should at a minimum be required to attend the IEP meeting to present their results. I think that's a fair ask. I also do, it is my sense, based on my understanding of a lot of the general rates for this service across districts such as Burbank, LAUSD, Whittier, that it, I'm just curious to see how this, the amount that's being paid per case, per independent evaluation, how that compares with other districts. So again, I don't wish to put a bottleneck in something that is moving forward and is a time-sensitive matter, but I wanted to just suggest that going forward, that, at a minimum, in the scope of services, that these clinicians do attend the IEP virtually is fine, I know ed code allows for that, to present their results. And then again, if we could just look at some of the prices and how they, the fees and how they vary across districts. So with that, Noah, can we, do we call for a vote now?
No, you already voted on it. It was a discussion only. We call for item I right now for motion and discussion.
So item 9?
I.
Thank you for that. That's something that we'll talk about this cabinet.
Yeah, please. Okay, thank you. So I is the approval of BHEF auditorium seats naming and pledge agreement.
Thank you so much. And thank-
Was that a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for the approval of BHEF auditorium seats naming and pledge agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion?
Sure. And thank you for your comments from a minute ago. I would be interested to learn a little bit more too.
Thank you, yeah, sure.
That would be great.
Absolutely, okay.
So I just want to thank everybody who's been involved in the BHEF movement to bring this naming, you know, rights fundraising opportunity to this district. It's going to be so fun and exciting, and I can't wait for it to happen. I reviewed the document, and I have some comments. And my reasoning is that I really want to make sure that BHEF is set up for as much success as possible, especially because they are all volunteers. And so I just want to make sure that the document that's going to be interfacing with the community is as clear as possible. And so I gave it my transactional lawyer I, and then also I gave it my parent I, because I know how it is to- I know how it is to be involved in a document and to have something in your mind and think that the document really, you know, accurately reflects the whole intention. But I see that there is some ambiguity that could potentially lead to conflict with our donors, and I don't think that that's what we want. You know, we want to have a partnership with whoever is doing these namings. So how would you like me to present my comments? Should I just start at the top and go through the document, Dr. Breggy, or?
Sure. I mean, we're happy to do that, and we can.
And then I can hand you my paper notes afterwards if you'd like.
Yeah, it's all, we've done that before, where you've given me both, and that's actually it's helpful to have both.
Okay, so I'm just going to start at the top. Hi, Tina.
Hi. Thank you, thank you so much.
It's my pleasure, and thank you for everything that you're doing to get this up and running.
And I appreciate you looking at this with both eyes, with both eyes, both sides of this, because, you're right, we want to make it as easy as possible, and we've had discussions about the other contracts, and so, yes.
So, I mean, you could potentially in the next couple of weeks have dozens of these documents out. And so I just want to put you in a position where, once these are signed, you can very easily create a spreadsheet and know where you've got to be on all the naming. And so.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So what I just want to bring to everybody's attention, we have a couple of dates that will be germane to the process, but I don't think that the dates are maybe called out in the way that they could be for more clarity. So at the top, you have your effective date, and to me, that's going to be the date that you, and I'm going to give you my notes, and you'll see it all. So that's going to be the date that the parties are signing. That will be your signature date, okay? Then you have a payment date, which is when the donor pays. So I'm trying to understand, is the donor going to write a check or give you a credit card, and is that going to go hand-in-hand with the signature version of this document?
So right now, we have it set up so that they can do it online, and so we can have this online as well.
Great.
When they are going ahead and purchasing the seat.
Okay, so the reason why the dates are important is because originally, when you came to the board, we had discussed a five-year term for these.
Right.
But then I saw in your rationale that a seven-year term would mean that, you know, a parent would have a TK or ENER, and then they'd have seven years, which makes perfect sense for an investment like that. But I saw that this is a 10-year term. The 10-year is fine also, but I just think it's very important that we designate what is the start date for the 10-year.
Okay.
Does the 10-year start on the date that the plaque is installed? And you don't have to answer this question. It's for me to ask the questions and for you guys to take your time to come back with the answers.
And I believe, right at this point, it would be at the point where we install the plaque.
Okay, so then that can also be clarified.
Okay.
That the plaque installation date would be the start of the term.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And the expiration date is usually like the day preceding the 10-year anniversary. You know what I mean? So 10 years later minus one day. And I think that the expiration date should be called out in some way, you know, like an addendum, or we'll notify you by email, or some kind of a commemoration. Okay, so that's just starting at the top. Then by and among, for donors, are we doing individuals only? I'm just curious to know if we have any parameters.
We're doing individuals only. We're not doing businesses for these.
Great. Okay, so then when you go down to paragraph one regarding the pledge, the fourth line down says that the donor hereby agrees to pledge and donate $1,500 to BHEF. I just want to make a notation that it would be for each seat.
Okay.
Because each contract has the potential for several seats, right? And we hope that they do take several seats. So I just want, you know, for each seat as described in this agreement, something like that. Okay? Then at the end of paragraph one, so the money is going to BHEF, is that correct? Okay. It says, "BHEF and the district acknowledge that the pledge will be donated to BHEF and used as determined by BHEF in compliance with its bylaws." And I think that we need to add a "and in coordination and at all times subject to the approval of the district." Sure. Okay. And I have that here for you. Then in paragraph two, donor.
Clarification, Judy, do you mean every time somebody wants to buy a seat, the district has to approve it?
No, I'm just saying that the monies go to BHEF, and I think that the spending of these monies, the district should have some kind of a.
So it's, so you're referring to the used as.
Used.
Used as, okay, not donated to.
Is that currently in the bylaw?
The namings?
That district's approved.
I mean, our mission is 100% to support the district.
Yeah.
But if you want to have extra.
Well, let's talk about it. So for me, again, it's more about asking the question. So as a board, what do we want to do? Do we want to, this is a district asset, and BHEF is doing us a good deed by helping us bring in these naming rights and these donations. For their efforts, do we want to say to them, "Okay, BHEF, the money, the dollars become yours, and you can see them, you can spend them in accordance with your bylaws," or do we want to say, "Hey, you use them, but we want you to coordinate with us, and we want to have a connection and approval?"
But I think we have that already.
Right.
That exists.
I think that's true. I mean, we work very closely with Dr. Breggy.
I have no doubt, yes.
Yeah, but I think we can look at those bylaws too.
Right.
Sure.
It should sit in the bylaws, Judy, not just in this, because it should encompass everything.
Sure. That's true, but the bylaws can change, and we may not as a board necessarily be able to control how the bylaws change. And so, since this is a district asset, there should probably be some coordination and oversight from the district, for consideration.
Sure.
And I would be more than happy to look at the bylaws and maybe, you know, we can get more comfortable in that way too. Okay? Okay, so then, moving to paragraph, are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving to paragraph two, donor recognition and term, when we talk about the seat or seats, I just was curious to know, like, is there going to be an allocation of row, 5-seat X? How is that their number?
Yes, they're going to be able to pick their seat. It's kind of going to be like an AMC movie theater.
Got you.
That they can pick the seat and check out right afterwards.
Great. Okay, then moving to paragraph three, "Subject to the terms of this agreement, the naming will last for 10 years, which shall commence from the effective date." But I think that we already confirmed it should be on the plaque installation date.
Right, that makes sense.
Okay. Well, the effective date is, the date the document is dated above, so we need a second date.
Yep.
Like a commencement date.
Yes.
Okay?
Don't call it effective.
Yes. Effective date means the document's effective, the obligations start, but I think the term will be based on the installation. Okay, then, "To honor the donor and to express the appreciation of BHEF and the district, publicity in the form of, please take out the A, of news announcements, as determined in the sole and absolute discretion of BHEF and the district, comma, is hereby approved," instead of R. Okay? So far, so good?
Yeah.
Okay. Then in paragraph four, modification of naming, so in the event the naming, so naming is capitalized, which means that at some point, we have to define naming? Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's above naming rights, cannot or is not accomplished. So I think that we just have to clarify that accomplish means to install the plaque? And then I'm not seeing any description about at whose cost is the plaque going to be procured and installed. I assume that's us, that comes out of the proceeds. I just think maybe we could clarify. Okay? Then in paragraph five, in the second line where it says "one year," I think we should cross out the S. And then at the end of paragraph five, I think we should add a "further, comma, donor waives the right to any attorney's fees." Okay? Okay. Then in paragraph six miscellaneous, I'm just seeing some inconsistencies. Some of the headings are underlined or italic, some of them are not, so I would just say if you could, if we can make those consistent.
I'm talking about D amendment?
I'm talking about six, yeah, exactly. For example, that's underlined, et cetera, just for looks. For the headings from 6A through L. Yeah, J, K, L. Okay? Then we're almost there. And the signature page is fine. Okay, so now we're in schedule one, which is really good. I think we discussed this last time, and thank you for, this is really nice and clear. So in the, here is where I think the naming rights shall be for a term of 10 years. I think that there should maybe be also a box that says, like, start date, end date, so we have clarity for your chart. And then I just was interested to know, on the payment date, you know, is it going to be paid in full within X days or at the time of signing? And I would just wonder, would it be a good idea to say, like, add a clause to the miscellaneous in paragraph six? For example, if the donor does not fully fund within X business days of the effective date, then at BHF's discretion or district, we can terminate the agreement. So then you're not stuck in a no-man's land of, we have this agreement, but it's not signed, what should I do?
Okay, no, that's great. And I don't believe we're going to be taking payments on any of these too. So I think it's just one shot, but I think it's good to have that in there too.
Good.
I do like having, sorry, I do like having the commencement date and the expiration date clearly defined, because that's, in the past, we've run into that with patrons, and it'd be nice moving forward that that's in writing, signed, and not discussed, you know, not negotiable.
Right. And at this point, we are also probably going to be doing it, like, several times a year.
Yes.
So that's going to help too. When these things expire, if it's based.
They'll be tranches, yeah.
It's going to be chunks, and it's not going to be three here and five here, and so I think that should make it a little bit easier too. For show.
Just a suggestion on the pledge information and payment information, I think it would be wise to make that each spreadsheet there, so you have the payment amount, the payment date, and then next to it, the start date and the end date, so it's all in one line, so it's easy to find. So you don't have to go looking around. It's all there in one spot.
And that might be TBD, and so you could even say to be filled out by BHF. Maybe that's something that comes after the fact. You might not know that at the time.
Right.
It could be installed once they.
Exactly.
Once they do it, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you don't have, like, it doesn't become chaos for you.
And this is great. And again, this is the first time we're doing it, and so we're hoping that we have all of these things worked out, and we have so many.
Me too.
Seeds purchased, that, yeah, that we really, you don't have to really think about all of these things, so thank you.
So colleagues, do you want to accept a friendly amendment with Judy's changes?
Yeah.
Or do we need to bring this back?
I'm comfortable with these changes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
No, you already made a motion. You can amend your motion.
I'm going to amend my motion.
Well, the motion was to approve this.
With the changes.
With the changes.
And then you made the second?
Yes.
So, you approve it?
I approve the changes, yes, with the changes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you, Judy, for.
Can we pass them over?
Yeah. Thank you so much for doing that.
We're excited. We're so excited.
And thank you.
About everything that's coming.
Me too.
Thank you, Judy.
That's why I just wanted to go off without a hitch.
And thank you for entrusting this to us. I think it's going to be great.
All right.
Thank you for Judyizing it.
And I'm always, I'm always in favor of having different people with different skillsets on a board, because we all come, you know, from different areas, and so, you know, the things that you have brought up, many of us certainly would not have occurred to us. So thank you, absolutely.
Thank you so much, it's my pleasure.
Expertise, okay. With that, we are going to go to the student board member report. I will say that I am wearing the MoreTwerk shirt.
You're proud.
Because I went to the robotics competition, and I had asked her if she wouldn't mind sharing a little bit about that, the results of that, and she already was on it, so.
Absolutely.
Take it away, Sophia.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, yeah, not to spoil things, we'll absolutely get there, Dr. Stern, but good evening to you all. Before I get into the amazing success of our robotics team, I want to start on a similarly victorious note, actually highlighting our athletics department, because on the left here is a photo of our boys volleyball team, which just as of this, earlier this afternoon, cemented their four-game win streak. Yeah, very exciting. So wishing them all the best, and a very exciting development. And similarly, on the right here, we have a picture earlier of our girls lacrosse team from Monday, where they have also, where they won their game against Liquid High, and are similarly on a, I want to say three-game win streak now, but yeah, very exciting and relatively unprecedented. So a great, a great start towards some of our spring sports this season at the high school. Okay. Yeah, again, as Dr. Stern mentioned, this, two weekends ago? Was it last weekend or two weeks ago?
Two.
Two weeks ago? Okay, yeah. Two weeks ago was one of our high school robotics team MoreTwerks regional competitions. It was the Los Angeles regional competition, in fact, at LA Da Vinci High School, where they finished as semifinalists and ranked 16th out of 44 in overall, in the LA region, which is very impressive and very exciting. They'll be continuing to compete next weekend, and they were, I was made aware, the first choice of the fifth alliance, meaning they were the fifth, I think finishing team's first choice to be paired with another alliance, because they combined, they combined schools.
Right. They draft each other, and they make an assessment of who they think they want.
Exactly.
And so, our team, which is called MoreTwerk 1550, but their robot is actually called Hopper.
Oh, amazing.
I don't know how they arrived at those names, but I think it's cute.
Yeah, love. Well, you can see here them working on the robot during the competition, and our entire team assembled on the left here, very, very impressive and exciting, and I'll keep you updated. Dr. Stern, did you want to add anything about your experience there?
It was just really great to see, you know, I've been, in my life, I've been to a lot of sporting events, I've been to arts events, but this is like, this is new, and it's a totally different set of kids, mindset, framework of mind, and I was really, really impressed to see how the students, along with the wonderful, amazing, essential parent volunteers, as well as Mr. Castle, how they worked so hard all this time leading up to this weekend. And one of the things that the students had to deal with is, which is common, is that there were some, you know, slight tweaking they had to do during the competition because something, you know, was awry, and there's actually a hanger, I know I'm not using all the right terms, where they actually would go and problem-solve and try to figure out how to fix it, and then they were back on. And so it was really a great exercise in resilience and trial and error and everything that we all should love when it comes to science. And I really saw the best of our students out there. And so it was very, and very entertaining as well to see these, all these little robots going around, and they're making baskets, and you're cheering for the robot, but the robot, of course, doesn't really care, but it was very exciting. So thank you for sharing.
Amazing, yeah, of course. No, it is such a great opportunity for our students, of course, to practice critical thinking and collaboration, problem-solving teamwork, all of that, and could not be done without all of our dedicated parent volunteers and staff volunteers and sponsors. So, yeah, great success. Another amazing opportunity and club we have at the high school I wanted to shout out was the Interact Club, because two weekends ago, they also went out in collaboration with the Beverly Hills Rotary Club and the Beverly Hills Courier to the Project Angel Food Kitchen in downtown LA to package meals for the bedridden and terminally ill. Just another amazing opportunity our high school students have to participate in not only community and volunteer work, but like, learn about their. but like, learn about their civic duty while engaging both with, um, like-minded volunteers from the city and outside. And, uh, just a great opportunity for them to get a head start, um, in their civic and community service work, like, as citizens and going forward beyond high school. Because a lot of this work is continued in the Rotary Club. It was, it was led by our staff sponsors, Joni Garrett and Prof. Isaac, who are amazing and so prolific in their work and collaboration opportunities that they bring to the high school. So, yeah, it was an absolute pleasure to be able to, uh, join the club for this activity.
Excuse me, can I interrupt you for one second, Sophia?
Always, Ms. Marcus.
I just want to share with you that that was going to be part of my board report, because I went to the, uh, P S, PTSA meeting the other day.
Yeah.
And you have an amazing advisor who's trying to revamp this group, and I was bringing that up, but you just hit it beautifully. So, thank you very much. I, I'll try to, I'll skip that, but I, that you brought it up, it was great.
No, of course, thank you. Continue to speak about it, please. I know they just did a presentation at, uh, one of our last PTSA meetings, yeah. And amazing work done. Okay, uh, continuing with some more of the events we've had at the high school in the past couple weeks. Uh, pictured center here is one of the acts from our annual Beverly's Got Talent Talent Show. Um, just one of the funnest events, I think, we have during the year. It is fun, it's a great opportunity, because it's, of course, a high school event, but put on at the middle school auditorium. So fun, always going back there, and a great opportunity for students to get together with their parents, reminisce in the building, and seeing their old classrooms and stuff, while also getting to see some of the amazing talented acts we have at the high school. So, uh, always a great event. And then on either side are some images from our senior movie night, put on by the PTSA last week on Thursday, which was just an amazing event, gorgeous, had to be rescheduled because of weather conditions a couple weeks ago. But I think truly went off without a hitch, and I just wanted to highlight because, to thank PTSA really, because of how much hard work and dedication and problem solving that went into this event that you maybe don't assume, um, is required for something like a movie night where we're all gathering on the field, but just so much work going on behind the scenes there. So, again, thank you so much to the PTSA, like, absolutely amazing. And then, uh, almost unwrapping things up here, I wanted to end things again on a, another recent victorious note, because above here are some art images from this last week, where our Beverly Hills High School Art Department was repped at Ted Luce, uh, California's 36th Congressional District Art Competition, where our art department and students did really well. They, we took home, I think in summation, third place overall, and then honorable mentions in both painting and mixed media works. And this is out of almost 200 works in the entire congressional district. Our students won $1,000 in scholarship money combined, so just wanted to put that in there, because an amazing opportunity and amazing sex, successes for our students, yeah.
I think also you won something at that.
Maybe, maybe something little, but that's like irrelevant. So, yeah, no, I just wanted to put in some awesome images here, because, great work.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah. All right, and that about concludes it. I know I touched on a couple things that may have already been brought up or are going to be brought up, but, yeah, thank you very much.
Great. I was so happy to see the, the, the large swath. We saw arts, we saw STEM, um, we saw sports, and we saw some of the social events, and thank you for encompassing that, um, board. It's civic, yes, civic-minded, so let's go around, and Mr. Margot?
No, thank you, um, Sophia. I, I was at the talent show, um, and I have to say that kid Ari that won with the jumping.
Jumping kid, yeah.
He's actually on our track team, and he does hurdling events, which, so that was so fun to see, yeah.
I did have our insurance company on the other line during that. Watching that was, it made me very nervous.
He was like a total celebrity walking into practice the next day.
I mean...
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
Absolutely.
I took a photo, but it's a blur, because it was...
It was amazing.
Anyway, thank you, um, nice to see, uh, Beverly kind of kicking A out there, so, I love it.
Today, when we were at the Parks and Rec, they asked us, um, you know, what programs do we have about teaching character? And, you know, we talked about PBIS and, you know, all the different programs we have, but really what you're talking about is really how we're teaching character. So, we had the Butterfly Project that we spoke about earlier, and what the meaning of that is, and really educating the students about that, and what that history is, and what our responsibility is around that. We talked about Interact and the Angel Food Project, and the students participating in that, and students participating in robotics, and, and being on a team, and really problem solving, and, and accepting, you know, what their problems are, and finding ways to have that resilience, and really working together. I think all of these programs that we have, when the kids can participate in them, in the, especially in the areas that resonate with them, is, you know, really how we're building character with our students and our student body. And I think we always want to encourage our students and our parents to have the kids to be involved, because we have such a wide breadth of programming for the students to participate in. And one of the things that I really notice is we see so many of our students participating in multiple things. So, uh, you know, I can see a Norman, a peer counselor, that's also participating in robotics, who's also participating in the talent show, and, um, you know, so many of our students are active and participating, and we don't speak enough about how great our students are. And, um, they're so involved, and they are really, they do have really solid character, and that is what we are really providing here at the district, and I don't think we speak enough about it, but we see it every, every time we have these meetings. And I, I don't think we can highlight that enough. So thank you, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll, uh, bring that up to them next time. Uh, I, I love your presentation so much. I love that you're capturing all the good stuff, I love the way you're describing it, and just thank you for bringing it to us. I appreciate your time on it.
Well, I want to thank you again for a very interesting report, very, really kept up the date and so on. I would like to make one mention that, that I think perhaps Sophia could do a better job than I can, but every Monday later in the afternoon, I get the Kbev update. And the, and I always watch that to find out what's going on, and I got to tell you, the students do a great job. It's a good way for me to find out what's going on in addition to what you tell me about, because that's weekly, and I really enjoy it, and I would love to give some kudos to those kids, because they work on it, they present it, and, and they do a great job with that. And I, I wish that more people in the community might watch it. I don't know if they do, but I do, and I just want to comment on their, their, how well they do, how poised they are, and the information that I get from it. So, kudos to Kbev and the...
Absolutely, shout out Kbev, yeah.
I agree, Rochelle, I watch them too. I, it's a great source of information.
And I love how it's preparing them for presentation, they have to prepare their material and so on. And at the very end, I love they all have a different sign-off signature. They all manage something different. It's really fun to watch.
Very fun.
I just want to share one other thing that I was going to put in my board, uh, at the, they mentioned something, you talked about PTSA and how supportive they are for you. In order to get you guys revved up about the Kbev, K, CAS testing that's coming, they're giving you a carnival, did you know about that? Ah, maybe that's the cat out of the bag. There's going to be a carnival for the kids at the...
There's going to be a secret carnival.
A secret, yeah, no one's going to know about it, yeah.
It's called a carnival for students to really get them excited about doing well on the CAS test. I don't know if anybody knew about it, but you heard it from me first. Well, actually, I heard it from the PTSA, and I'd like to thank the PTSA, because they're doing so much work.
It's at Rochelle's house.
Is that your house?
No, I don't, I don't know where they're going to put it, but they, they said, and I know that Mr. Stewart said he's going to be in the dunk tank and things like that, so.
Oh, my.
I, um...
Is it Crush the Casp Carnival?
Yeah. Oh, I love it.
That's a big advertisement, yeah.
That's to get them ready and hope that they'll do their very best, because sometimes kids don't think that, that matters anymore.
And parents.
And that's very important. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Amazing, thank you, yeah.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, under Personnel Services.
Um, and so no formal, yours was so good, that, um, no formal, uh, report, as you know, I've been working on a matter for the district, large issue outside the district, um, which is hopefully coming to an end, uh, this week, so thank you for your patience. Uh, and just want to say, I'm really excited about, especially when I'm listening to the Butterfly Project, that I was selected by the, um, Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles to, uh, join a few other educational leaders in the area to, uh, take a 10-day trip to Israel at the end of June. And I'm so excited, and that just gets me excited, and I'm really inspired by, by, by what I'm hearing. Um, and just want to say, just happy spring break, um, and I have about 2,000 emails that are unread, so I'm going to be doing that over spring break. But, uh, thank you for all of your patience and my great, uh, team that's been stepping in while I've been out.
I just sent you an email to ask you if you did your emails.
Did you get my auto-response?
Yes, I did. Can't repeat it in this company. I'll make a motion for the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between Beverly Hills Unified School District and the BHEA Article IX Evaluation.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, all in favor?
I just wanted to make a note quickly. This, this has been a very long time coming, a revamping of our, uh, faculty evaluation system. This was done in great concert with both the administration and our faculty. I know this is something that Mrs. Wells and I were banging on for a while, but I can tell you, it goes many, many years before that, um, that, uh, every cycle of evaluations, we would, there would be something else that kind of preempted our ability to really tackle this. So I am really glad that probably after a decade, where we really got down to brass tacks this time, and then totally overhauled our evaluation system to make it more effective. In the end, the, the end game on this is, is improve instruction for students. And that's something that, and the few things that the board gets to do that trickle down into a classroom, this is one of them. So I'm proud of everybody involved that had the patience and the wherewithal and the knowledge to see this finally through into this, um, cycle of evaluate, of, um, negotiation. So, thank you, thank you, um, a big, big hats off to everybody.
I'm going to actually piggyback on that real quick to Elena Castanon and, um, the, the folks who represent, um, BHEA, and also, of course, Dr. Horvath, so thank you. I know it was a lot of work, um, and, and thank you for the...
Get back and forth.
Okay, sorry, uh, Mary, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same. Um, thank you so much, Matt, and also, um, Elena, and to our partners for, um, uh, getting this done and actually, um, putting it into practice. I'm really looking forward to it. I think it's going to continue to take our district in the direction that we want to go, and I really am happy to hear about the, um, positive attitude and, um, uh, the general good feelings I'm hearing about, uh, this being adopted by everybody. So, that gives me great hope, and I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you very much.
Just want to speak to the MOU itself. It is so detail-oriented, and it has a lot of pieces to the puzzle. The Danielson framework is something that we've been looking at, and it is deep, and it is qualitative, and it has its domains and its subjects. And I just thank you, Matt, for your work on this, and I thank Elena and all the teams, for the trust that you've put in the board and in each other as partners to bring us to this point. I hope that, you know, the intention of this board has been clear, and that we're really coming from a place of pure intentions and decency. And we're trusting you guys with this next phase, and it's something that's very exciting for our district. And as you go through these motions and as you put this into practice, please come to us if you, if you need us. You know, but it's yours now, and we will look forward to, you know, the partnership between Cabinet, Administration, and Staff in implementing this. So we wish you the best of luck, and this is exciting for our district. Thank you.
Well, you just took that word out of my mouth, the collaboration, and that's it. This is a decision that's been made between the teachers and the administration, so everybody knows what to expect of everybody. And I always would like to speak to the fact that, uh, having gone through the evaluation process in Beverly Hills as a teacher, which was, I felt, very, very weak, I am thrilled to see all the detailed rubrics that they will be following to evaluate the teachers and so on, and, and the fact that they will know what's expected of them and what they're looking for. I mean, they'll be really ahead of knowing what it is that we're look, zeroing in on and what the rubric will be. And I think this could be nothing but very, very positive for future wonderful evaluations and improvement in the teaching, and that's what we're all about, getting it better. So, I look forward to seeing it in implementation, and I want to thank everybody for getting it finally done. It took a while.
With that discussion, uh, call for the vote. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
This was also a really good kickoff for us, and I also want to extend my thanks to. It was actually, you know, it, it was a lot of work in a very short amount of time, I think. I think it moved, uh, really quick. Sometimes districts spend many years on this, and so, um, I also appreciate this being expedited and that partnership. Um, this has really launched something a little bit further as an executive cabinet. We've talked about just now, uh, looking at the administrator, uh, evaluation tool, and, um, and working with the Danielson model so that it's aligned. So this has actually been a springboard for more work and more alignment, so that we can have that from our, uh, teaching staff to, um, our administrators. So you can look forward to, uh, getting some more information about that soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to award bid number 2324-PUR018 for wireless network infrastructure equipment and services.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Margot, seconded by Ms. Marcus. All in favor?
Just a quick question on that, sorry. You're so zippy with the votes. We'll just, I'll speak slowly until Mr. Guzman hits the podium. Um, I just want to confirm, I noticed the, the funding from this is from the bonds. Is it, was it previously budgeted as a bond expenditure?
Yes, yes, this is previously budgeted. It's for, uh, wraps or wireless access points across the district, uh, district-wide. It's really badly needed, and, or not badly, it's sorely needed, so, um, it's definitely, it's from those funds.
And these are, these are additional replacements to older equipment?
There, some are replacements, and some are additional for better coverage.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will move for the approval of the Garza Construction Incorporated for Venigo Backfill Work at Beverly Hills High School.
I will second.
All in, uh, discussion?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Anybody else before me?
Nope.
We, we moved for, I thought we got this stuff free, I mean, that the dirt that we collected, can you explain why there's such an extensive, uh, amount of money that's in there for the proposed work that has to go on now? I believe it's, uh, well, the lowest quote was from, for $59,000, but what was the triangle in general? Those were the proposals from the other companies, correct?
That's correct, we received three quotes.
Why do you think there's such a difference? Well, I mean, it's amazing that one is 59, one is 117, and one is 181. I mean, that's unbelievable.
And LAX was free, right?
What's that?
LAX was free? Didn't we get the dirt from...
We got the dirt for free, so the, just to answer your first question, the previous contract we had was just to actually accept the dirt to the site. This contract is to actually grade out the dirt, level it, compact it, and also install a drain, uh, at the Venigo site. And then, I don't know how to really explain why it's such a lower bid for the low bidder, but just, I would say, lower overhead possibly. Yes, absolutely, yeah.
That's why we go out for bids.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay, call for the vote?
Aye.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the approval of Garza Construction for CCTV and PA system install at, uh, the high school.
I will second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, oh, yes. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to 13C.
I'll make a motion for the approval of Amendment Number 14 to the Pro West Contract, removing portions of the high school from the site lease.
All second? Uh, any discussion?
Thank you so much. I took a look, I will, thank you for joining us.
Put your, yeah.
I just wanted to have a, a more complete understanding of the reduction in the space. I understand that the, um, the footprint that is going to be part of the lease, lease pack will decrease, but can you just inform us on what is going to be the difference in the visual?
Uh, sure.
Basically, the difference is originally the limits of the lease were not clearly defined. It just said basically B1, B2 originally, and now we're on B3, B4. We never really took out B1, B2, first of all. And the original lease almost incorporated the entire high school.
Yeah.
So, now we're limiting the boundaries to the B3, B4 sites, so the two buildings and their lay-down and drop mobilization area.
Okay. And then, are you defining the lay-down and drop mobilization area as the whole front lawn? Because I saw the whole thing cross-hatched.
Correct.
And then, do you think that there might be a point in the future where we might have another amendment where the front lawn also comes off of that?
Absolutely, depending on how we proceed with that project. But yes, that could be a possibility.
Thank you.
Well, one thing I would love to mention is that this removal of this reduction is causing, it's saving us some money and I think it should be moved, I think about $4,700,000?
No, I think that's the next item you might be talking about.
Oh, I mean, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. This just limits their space. There's no financial impact.
No financial, okay.
Okay, barring...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Barring further discussion or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, okay. Now, I'll go for the approval of amendment number 40, the agreement with DLR Group for Architecture and Engineering Services for the Beverly Hills High School Modernization Project.
All second? Discussion, questions?
Did you want to ask that question?
Ms. Marcus, you had a question.
Fill us in a little bit on what's happening here.
So, basically, what we're doing here is, as part of our value engineering efforts, we needed the help of DLR Group to help incorporate all of the changes we're proposing. And in order to do that, they needed to do some additional architecture and engineering. But the majority of this amendment is for their construction, administration of Building C, the future Conheim. It's about 60% of this change is just strictly for the administration of that construction contract, which was not part of their original agreement.
Well, it talks about the grand lawn in this one and it talks about retaining walls and parking lots, if I'm reading correctly.
Correct. So, all the changes we've been proposing on the whole site, not just Building C, they've incorporated into our plans.
Is this, beside the changes, was the construction administration already figured into the budget?
Yes, all of that, even the value engineering costs are the part of the budget that we proposed. And actually, this is below the budget that we had lengthy negotiations with DLR and this is below the budget number that we had.
Yes.
Do you think you could talk about that part? Because I think it's a significant negotiation and I think it's worth noting.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Thank you for calling me. So, first, I want to thank DLR. They did a great job in this process with us. We had, first of, there was one amendment for them that was pending from the time that we came onboard. They agreed that we are not going to proceed with that. Their cost on that portion of that was about like half a million dollar and they, on a good faith, they said, because again, more than a year passed and they don't want to proceed with that. And all of these items, the original proposed cost for the value engineering and also the CA of Building C was higher than what you see. The total was above, I think, like four and a half million dollars. And they cooperatively worked with us to bring this within the budget that we had and number that we budgeted for. So, this is below the budget that we had in our master budget for the program.
Okay. Go ahead.
Do all of these changes, everything, have to go before the DSA or are we waiting on some of them now? Are we waiting on some of them now or have some of them been approved or is this all new?
Not all of them. Like, grand lawn part is technically done. We are in the final step of the approval. I believe this is going to be approved this week. They have an appointment next week, actually. And the rest of that, whatever is structural, yes, there needs to go in front of DSA. So, Buildings C definitely, Building C definitely needs to go to DSA. The changes, some of them is like, the retaining walls may not need to go to DSA. Depends on the structural engineer's opinion because we are only lowering the height. But whatever has fire life safety impact or structural impact needs DSA approval.
Thank you.
Is this also incorporating in? I think it was either 38 or 39 when we did agreement with DLR to do the plans for the fields and everything. It also then included CA. Is this also incorporated into this?
This doesn't have any overlap with their previous amendment. This basically solely for the changes that was proposed since we are onboard and the contract administration of Building C. Whatever it was in their contract, it's already going to be in their contract.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Since you're here, I just wanted to thank you so much for your monthly updates.
Of course.
And for anybody who's watching, they're on the BHUSD website and they come out between the 10th and the 14th of every month. And they are fantastic and I'm sure that a lot of time goes into the precision of the information that's in there and they are very meaningful and I appreciate you and Will and your teams for doing that.
Of course, I appreciate it.
I mean, does this also include the removal of the parking in Building C or is that...
Yes.
It does. Okay. So, as I've stated before, I am not in support of removing that parking lot. I do support the other work in this amendment, but due to the fact that it's attached to this, I can't support this particular amendment.
I just am curious to know, I mean, my mother-in-law always says it's good to want, you know? I would also like more, but how would you like to pay for it?
Well, we never were given the opportunity to really discuss that out. It was the direction of the board at the time was to remove the parking lot and relocate it to the field. My, I'm on record with how I feel about putting a new structure up without parking.
Yeah.
So, and for us to have to work that out and kind of plan it out would have required more work for us to do, which, which at the time, we were moving forward.
I mean, I hear you. It's just, from what I recall, we're saving something like 12 to 14 million dollars. And is it your desire to go out for a bond?
No, no. It's my desire to look at COPs and the possible other options for spending.
Okay.
I did not, I was not interested in going for another bond.
Got it.
Right. I mean, I think the direction really was about how can we finish the school with the bond funds that we had because we understood that we didn't have the funds to be able to do that. And the parking lot that we are having now is, was to replace the parking underneath. It wasn't to simply eliminate parking. They found another area to add that parking. And in fact, I think the numbers become more number, more parking spots than we would have had had we gone underground. So, we're going to, at the end of the day, have more parking and not go underground. And so, I think that's a great compromise and it allows us to finish the school and we're going to finish it faster. And I think that's a win-win in every way. And it doesn't include, I mean, you talked about 12 million dollars for that building, but you're not talking about the construction oversight and all the other costs that come with doing that and the time that it takes and the costs that come with time to do that as well. So, it's not just 12 million, it's a lot more when it gets down to the end of the day that we're not even taking into consideration. So, all of those things have an impact and I applaud you for finding a solution that works for us, that's going to allow us to finish the school and have our kids be on the finished campus. We're seeing it now. You've gone out for bids already for the pre-construction for Building C. The upper fields are happening, those numbers came in less. And so, I think we're really on a fantastic path. I think it's definitely something that's worth supporting and to feel good about because it's been a very solid solution to the problems that we face as a school district. And there are many, many buildings today that are being built without parking underneath. A perfect example is if you look at the Wilshire Boulevard Temple in, you know, in Mid-Wilshire, they built that beautiful new building and there's no parking underneath there either. And it's not uncommon to happen and we found a great parking solution that works. And it worked for a lot of reasons because it also solved the problem with where, how do we remediate that area as well? So, I think it was a really fantastic solution in many ways. So, I support it completely.
Listen, I'm not trying to convince everybody else. I just wanted President Stern to be able to call for the no vote when the time came so she knew that I was, because we usually do a voice vote, so I just was giving her the heads up. Listen, there are a lot of savings benefits to the plan as it's moving forward. I don't deny that. I had offered thoughts about finishing the upper field, finishing Building C and holding off on the south field and being able to put, use that as a later project so you can build all your new structures and have the additional field space. There were other options we discussed. And listen, it's okay sometimes to be the minority vote. It's, I'm not going to lose sleep over that. I just, I just, this is something I'm passionate about. And I know that new construction around the city is based on concepts of mass transit and reducing parking because there's supposed to be less cars. It's not going to happen. We can't fool ourselves into thinking that that's going to be a solution. They're allowing more buildings to be built without adequate parking. It's not acceptable and it's going to continue to eat up our streets. It's also going to force the community visitors to come through the campus and have to be traipsing all around the campus for community events as opposed to being kind of centered down off, just off Moreno. There might be security issues with that. I don't know if we've thought those through because it's going to be more, more distance and time for people to traverse from parking lots to the basketball courts once the new building is built. There's a lot of things to consider. As great as the savings are, it also may pose us some problems down the road. But listen, like I said, I'm not trying to convince anybody. I just wanted to just be able to take my vote as I wanted, so.
Okay, understood.
I, the only thing that I was curious to know is that this parking lot is right on the border of Olympic Boulevard, as I recall. And my concern is the traffic exit and in and out of that parking lot on Olympic or wherever it's going to be, I don't know. I'm very concerned about that and I haven't seen that plan yet. If you have that plan or, no, you don't have that.
No, we don't.
That's the only thing that I am very concerned about because I can recall coming out of El Rodeo School from their parking lot when it was the way it was and praying that I never got hit by a car coming one way or the other. It was just a miserable thing to have to do. And I, I just vision that right now and I'm concerned. So, know that I am not opposed to the parking lot, but I am opposed to, or not in favor of how yet or what's going to happen with entrance and exit from that parking lot.
It's a very valid comment and we are going to make sure that we are going to work with the design team as they are moving forward with the design. So, we make sure that when we bring forward the design, it's being considered.
All right. Barring further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, moving to board policies.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the second reading of revised bylaws 9100B, 9124B, 9220, 9223B, 9027B, 9320B, 9322B, and 9323B.
All second? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Just clarification on one thing that I changed my vote. I would like to call up that question of, in the thing, there's a paragraph in the election of a new member.
I have it here if you want to look at mine.
Yeah, I accidentally turned it off.
Election of officers?
Can you, can you start with the policy number?
What's the policy number?
Uh, I found page two for me, 9100B, correct. And I'm showing it as on the bottom of page two of 26.
Okay.
Rochelle, I can make it bigger for you. There was something about every, if it's less than four months, we don't have to replace the person. But if it's, somewhere it says six months to 130 days. And that was confusing what they were trying to say in that particular section because of the fact that 130 days would probably be four months, six months to four months. Is they giving you another window of, that you have to or you don't have to? I didn't remember, I was trying to figure out what they were trying to say there because it was confusing. And when I mentioned it to somebody else in the community about it, they also found that confusing.
So, I think you're talking about the filling the vacancy policy, not the...
No, no, not, not the general, I think it's not...
So, which one is that, Michael?
I think it's towards the end.
Replacing, no, that's...
It is...
You had the wrong number.
Yeah.
9223B.
Okay, there.
Filling vacancies. It's showing on page seven.
Okay. So, something about four months?
Yeah.
And then it says, oh, back, six months.
Here it is. One of vacant timelines fulfilling a vacancy.
Yep.
I'll turn this on. When a vacancy occurs, the board shall take the following action as appropriate. One, when a vacancy occurs within four months of the end of a board member's term, the board shall take no action. So, that's per ed code. So, that's 120 days.
Right.
Okay. Two, when a vacancy occurs...
Read from here.
Oh, yeah, you're right, Rochelle. From six months to 130 days. So, what happens between 120 and 130? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, it said, and before a regularly scheduled board election at which the position is not scheduled to be filled.
A special election to be...
That's very confusing and I'm not quite sure what we're driving at there.
It's...
And I'm not sure that that shouldn't be reviewed to make sure that we...
It's in our ed code, but it's something that we're going to, we'll be talking about at our next meeting as well. But it is, it is part of ed code, so it is part of the policy.
But if someone would explain what it means, because I personally, I mean, I think I'm fairly sharp, but I can't understand what they're, because then they say, it's not, something about the word, there's a negative in there.
Yeah, but I think it's the third one that covers it. When a vacancy occurs, number three.
Yep.
When a vacancy occurs outside of the statutory time windows identified in items one and two above, the board shall, within 60 days of the date of the vacancy or the filing of the member's deferred resignation, either order an election or make a provisional appointment.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that one and two are confusing because they don't hit the nail on the head.
Right.
And then, number three comes in.
It is number three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you good, Rochelle?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to share that in that, we already voted on it, but I did want to express my...
Yeah.
Whatever about that particular...
Yeah, it's not so intuitive.
Right. I had the same question when I first read it as well, but then when I got to the next one, then it cleared to me.
I was still trying to figure out the second one and never went to the third one. What is this all about?
I went to the third and then I said, that's why.
Well, I didn't get there. I just stopped there because I said, this can't be.
Yeah, it's, it's in the number three area because it's, it's about seven months.
But the second one is there, that confused me.
And the election part makes it more confusing.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
We voted already.
Yes, we did. Professional and official business, discussion item for Horseman Improvement and El Rodeo Fencing.
Is that this one here?
Yep. 15A.
There it is. All right, well, good evening again and thank you for allowing us to present on our
All right, well, good evening again and thank you for allowing us to present on our progress at El Rodeo and then also to talk about some items at Horace Mann. So I'd like to start with an item that we've discussed a few times in several board meetings and it's this TK patio shade. Now, on the left-hand side, you'll see that our original approved design, which we reviewed with you, showed two shades on the patio. Unfortunately, after going back and forth with DSA several times, they would only give us approval for what you see on the right and that's one shade, which is 16 by 40 feet and we had to stagger the poles a little bit. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention that this had to change because we had no other option with DSA due to the vicinity and the, of the ramp and the wall.
Can you tell me why they wouldn't approve it?
Yeah, so there's some footings in the existing ramp, the ADA ramp that's in the patio. And also there's a lot of concern and questions about the, the wall around the perimeter and being too close to that and getting within their footings. And without basically tearing everything up and ripping everything out, this is the best that DSA would allow us to do without having to do exploratory demo.
Would this be cheaper than?
Yes, it'll be cheaper. I wouldn't say exactly half, but it'll be, you know, obviously much less.
And aren't we also adding some, you know, some additional things to like the umbrellas, you know, we're trying to add some things.
Now that we have more space on the patio, we'll be doing other things like adding umbrella seating and any other shade options that we can do, maybe a play structure that has a shade as well, a small structure and not a play structure.
Well, is this, this is 40, 40 feet by 16 feet?
Correct.
So it's still pretty extensive in terms of, if you're, if you're standing there, it would feel like there's significant coverage.
Right.
It's much larger than the original umbrella shades that we proposed.
Right.
So this is still an improvement.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's the S A approved already, so we're ready to begin in the summer.
Is that developer?
Yes, developer fees.
So that'll happen this summer?
Yes.
So I'm just curious to know.
Very happy.
Because this summer, summer school will be at Horace Mann. And so I just was curious to know, how long do you expect the installation to take offhand? Do you have any estimate?
I do, just from the previous, we were trying to build this, do this over winter break and before we had all these changes, but it's basically a two-week process. And I don't think it'd be any different this time. It'd be about two weeks. And we are just talking about the patio here. I don't know if it affects summer school.
Like for example, so then, do you have to then bid this out?
We're actually going to go after pricing that's already established through either CMAS or another cooperative agreement. So we don't intend on bidding it out.
Okay. Michael, do you remember off the top of your head, I don't expect you to remember this with what, what you've been up to this week, but when is summer school starting?
It's right.
Right after, right?
It's directly after.
June 10th. Okay. Well, good luck with that.
Thank you. Well, and I do think, and I appreciate you bringing up that question because summer school is, and with the numbers of city programs and summer programs that we have, it's really a miracle that this is all orchestrated. But I think, I think that this is still something that, you know, we can kind of cordon off and do something so that it's, it's safe for kids because there's plenty of room for students and there's still some workable areas here for it to be safe and have it finished.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think, although it's not for me to say, but I would think if, for example, it starts on, when's the last day of school? June 2nd or 3rd? 1st?
Friday, Friday.
Yeah, like if it starts on June 2nd, by the 10th, you might make a lot of really good progress and, you know, be done and have it in place at the beginning of the summer. And then the kids can have a cooler experience.
Yeah.
By cooler, I mean more shady.
That would be ideal, but I don't want to promise that we'll start the very first day of summer because there's still some approvals that have to take place and of course, you know, procurement of the actual shade.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is the one where I'm going to need your luck on. So the next item is the.
Your luck?
Well, you know, you wish me luck and I think I need more luck for this one.
Okay, let's do it.
So this.
A genie?
Then you point out exactly where on this map we're talking about.
Yes, so it's the red clouded area here. I think I can zoom in a little bit.
Right.
Yeah. So that's the preschool play area that we'd like to establish and construct. And what we had so far, we had an architect develop and design the space based on parameters of the walls, the elevator room and the shade to the north. So what we're proposing to do here is build a 22 by 37-foot shade structure. That's this larger rectangle here. Underneath that structure will be a rubberized play surface, the poured and placed play surface, and of course, the play structure on top of that. We're also going to install an artificial turf to separate the play area from the building, building A. And then we are also plan on installing a fence around the entire perimeter to provide some safety for the kids that are playing in there.
Is there going to be a play structure under the?
Yeah, under the shade, yeah.
So as, as I'm looking here, the play structure will be here and the TK and Kinder classes are over here?
Yes, actually, yes, TK and Kinder.
And can you remind me where the two new preschool classes will be situated?
Yeah, so on this map here, I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Yes.
They'll be right here. One will be here and one would be right there.
Perfect.
Trying to get there with my cursor.
So it'll be like a little early childhood village?
Yes, sure.
And can you also point out where the playground area for the preschool classes?
Yeah, that's the clouded area.
But it's also going to be, are we doing anything to the left of that or no?
Uh, no, well, that's on my next slide. We'll be doing something at the drop-off, but we decided not to put anything here because there's a lot of utilities right here in this area. So we didn't want to build the play area or play structures in this space.
Yeah, that's a good little pocket for it.
Yeah, and actually, we met this morning with the city and they told us what the minimum amount of play area they needed and we're a couple hundred square feet above that.
Great, thank you. And then.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Just to give us a ballpark on next steps for this and timing?
Uh, next steps is now that I appear that I'm getting your blessing to move forward, we're going to get quotes on all the, the equipment, the work and give the architect a go-ahead with the design to submit to DSA. That's probably the most crucial aspect so that we can have an approved set of plans by the summer to build all this stuff.
Great.
So yeah, we'll be looking for procurement options as far as what types of shades we can buy, what types of play structures we can buy. And then of course, the pricing we'll present to you when we, when we come to it.
Thank you.
And the budget is coming out of?
Developer fees as well.
Great.
That's actually a perfect use for developer fees when it benefits the city as well.
Absolutely.
It's great, thank you.
Okay, so that was a discussion item, so we.
I think this whole.
We got, we have more.
Presentation's discussion, yeah. But you can stop me at any time if.
No, please, continue.
Okay. Uh, the final item for Horace Mann that I wanted to talk about is the new proposed drop-off area at the Charleeville entrance. We've been getting, of course, a lot of comments about there's not a lot of space for the parents to congregate while their kids are being picked up and dropped off. We've met with the architect and he provided a design here where basically we'll be building a secondary fence that matches the exterior fence and we'll be placing it right at the bottom of the circle to allow for the parents to congregate right in this area here.
What area?
Right here below the.
Below the circle.
Below the circle. So I don't know if you remember, originally we, we proposed a much larger plan, which would totally blow out this whole space and provide more hardscape on each side of the walkway. That would have been quite a considerable amount of money to do that. So we're just now proposing to build a secondary fence alone and provide more space for them to congregate. And then we could always add some tables, umbrella seating alongside of the, the walkway in a future day, once we get the fence in.
And Will, this is not, the current gate is going to remain.
Yes, so.
This is in addition to.
Yeah, the current gate would remain. The secondary gate would only be open during pickup and drop-off. And then we'd close, actually, the exterior gate would be the one that's closed. We could leave the interior gate open during the school day if we wanted to have additional areas for the kids to play and congregate.
And then is there a source of proposed funds for this?
Uh, this would also be developer fees.
I mean, I'll tell you, I went to Horace Mann two times yesterday in my spare time. Once in the morning at 8:30 and then once at pickup at 2:45. And I didn't see a huge need for this because there are three different access points. One, when you come down Hamel, one is the Ron Brown Auditorium gate and then the other is the TK release area and the, actually, there's four. And then there's one on the Charleeville side closer to Hamel, which is the courtyard. And then there's the main gate. But I feel like this is a question that keeps coming back to us. So is there like another desire to build community and have the parents have an opportunity to congregate? Or is there something about this request that maybe we don't know that would help us know more?
I don't think I'd be the best person to respond to that.
I, I know that it gives some flexibility to the school because some of the, the Hamel entries are creating some traffic issues. And it's, you know, they've, they've purposely kind of pushed out to different areas so that it would alleviate because we didn't have people that it was, I mean, they were spilling into the street. And also I can tell you, I've driven by on the weekends and when, when people are dropping off kids for city programming on the weekend, it gets really busy as well. It's very much like old El Rodeo when, when we didn't have that open and parents were, and kids were like right on the sidewalk, right on Whittier. So, and this, this will give them that flexibility because I'm not so sure that some of what we're doing on Hamel is in the best interest of traffic and all the parked cars along Hamel as well.
Well, I, I do appreciate that, you know, you took the time and Dr. Bregge to take the time to give a more, a more minimalist approach where it's a little bit more reasonable, the pricing, but it, it gets the job done and gives them the flexibility to be a more safe.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And there's still, you know, oftentimes right after school and when adventure camp starts and some of the gate programming that, you know, we have students that are just darting off kind of everywhere. And it's, it's really, it makes us really nervous sometimes when they're running and, you know, they're so close to the street. This is going to provide a much safer area.
I, I like the solution so much better than before. I think it makes sense and it's, it also is flexible and, and it's also not taking away from the bond funds because I, you know, I do think our priority is to finish the high school. So I feel comfortable with this if it's just the fencing and that's what's creating that flexibility. What's the timing for that? And I guess the other question that I ask is, you know, we're moving El Rodeo this summer. You're doing the playground, you're doing the shade structure. And then we're also doing the fencing. I just want to make sure you have the bandwidth to keep everything moving.
I'd say that's a great point. Thank you for making it.
Because we have to prioritize. I mean, we want to make certain that we're moving into El Rodeo successfully and that everything's moving forward with the high school. So I just want to make sure that.
So for bandwidth purposes, I would say if anything, it would be the previous project I'd be more concerned about. This one, not as much. And of course, Amin and his team are very helpful in all of these projects and they, we have plenty, I would say plenty of bandwidth. Now whether or not we can make it happen with the DSA schedule and contracting and procurement, that would be a different story, but a project like this wouldn't take a lot of bandwidth from us.
I mean, I look at it, it's just another summer in BHUSB. It is. Summers are incredibly busy and the, the number of balls we're juggling in there. Every single summer, there has been movement somewhere. And so this is unlike any other summer. What, did you mention an approximate pricing on this?
Not for this one now yet. So approximately, we're looking at about $50,000.
Okay, wrought iron?
Wrought iron. It's actually fencing that's made to match the exterior fence and they're actually come out in, in panels. So it's going to be a much easier installation.
And this is, this also needs DSA approval?
We are going to get it approved for access. The fence is not over seven feet, so we don't need a structural approval, so it's just access only.
Okay.
Great. I'm okay with it.
Great. I think you have our blessing on that one.
Yes.
Moving on.
I would like some clarification on this because.
Really nice.
You're putting a fence around this, there's round thing is a, there's, is that, is that something that's there already? Just in the middle of all this?
Yeah, so on the.
Hardscape, I think I.
On the perimeter of the circle, there's a concrete seat wall, we call it. That's kind of the portion.
On the other side of the fence, on the, on the, on the.
So on this.
Top side, there's a sea wall there that they.
On this side, on the outside of the fence?
No, I'm looking, look at the yellow line.
Yep.
Directly above it, you have something called hardscape. Now that's.
Uh, that's, yeah, that's just concrete, it's the concrete circle.
There's, there's nothing there that, now, now the, the next question that I have is you've got the fence just south of it, so to speak. But you've got a gate there.
Yes.
Now that, when is that gate opened and closed?
So the idea is in the, during pickup and drop-off, the gate's closed, so that.
The gate is closed during pickup and drop-off, but the kids coming to drop off there have to go through that gate.
Right, I mean, it opens and closes, so the idea is we.
I'm not talking about the gate on Charleeville. I'm having a difficult time thinking that this might be the solution to a problem. I, I would love to see a solution. I don't see this as the solution that I would like.
Rochelle, it's basically we creating an airlock chamber, if you know what an airlock chamber is, right? That's, that's what the concept is because I've been there also in the afternoons and people are spilling onto the street and it is a safety issue.
I'm not arguing about that part. I'm, I'm thinking, why can't there be a gate further toward the street that provides something for the parents to sit at? I'm, I'm not, I just think that you've taken away too much for this.
Well, it's not really, it's not space that's really used by the students during the day. It's not space that's used by students during the day.
Moving it down, it could be used by the students then. Well, all I'm saying is I'm not, this doesn't appeal to me. I'm being very honest. I don't like, I would like something that I agree that they're spilling over into the street, but you have area between that circle, half-circle there and the end of the wall, whatever that, what's that building? There's a black line there that I don't know what's next to it.
Yeah, I think that's the gate.
That's the gate and there's a.
The, the solid line?
Yeah.
That's how close it is to the street.
Right. And there's three different streams of traffic, so.
This is the sidewalk here.
Yeah. And it's at an, at an intersection, right.
Well, I bet I, I'm aware of that and I, but I, I see this as being something that could be done without taking, putting the fence so far in, so far in.
I think like Noah, I believe, mentioned, the idea is we leave the, the new gate open during the day so the students can use that space.
Yes.
So it sounds like you're going to be opening and closing that gate a lot because you got to, kids coming in the morning, they got to go through the gate. Then you got to lock the gate, then you got to open the gate and after school.
But they're doing it for the big gate anyways.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just telling you, I think it's not, I don't like the plan, that's all.
I'm going to take you there, Mrs. Marcus. I'll take you there. It's, it's different if you're there. You have to see it, it, yeah.
I'm not going to, I mean, I want to see that this.
You need to see it.
I know that there's a need to get the people off the street, off the sidewalk. It's basically the sidewalk that gets congested and they spill into the street. I, I understand that completely, but I'm not sure that there is a better way of doing this if I can see it and make my own.
I'd be happy to.
It's congested, but it is a long street, so safety is never an issue there. Here, I feel like it's narrow.
It is narrow.
And it's a much shorter street.
They could probably.
I mean, I, I like the lines of the gate. I, I like the lines of the fence following where the landscape and the hardscape already is. It makes sense to me. If you were to go closer to the sidewalk, then you're going to intersect somewhere along the way. And then to me, that feels like.
How high does that gate have to be or that fence have to be that you're planning to install?
Seven feet.
Since there's already a fence on the other side, on the street side.
Six feet, I believe.
Huh?
Yeah, six feet.
Six feet? Chain link?
No, wrought, wrought iron to match. Don't get into, we don't want to get into.
Chain link, yeah.
We'll get there at the end of this presentation.
That's next.
I, I would like, before I, we're only yet discussing this right now, so I get a chance to go over and look at it and get my own feelings of what I would like.
Yeah, so the next step would be.
I'm not opposed to it. I just don't.
Yeah. I see what you're saying about it taking the amount of space, but I, but from an alternative, I think it's the path of least resistant and it, it follows the lines of the landscaping and I, I think you're.
Finding the core, the contour.
I think it'll disappear to you and whether they use that space or not, right now, they probably don't, but there is access to it if they want to, even if the, you know, the gate shut all the time. They can, you know, if a teacher wants to take them over there, they can. And, you know, I just, it, from an aesthetic standpoint, it seems like it makes sense with the least disruption to what's already there. And it is nice when you walk in. And I like it when you walk in. So I, before I didn't like the plans, I thought it made no sense to me, but this seems very natural to have like a second layer gate.
So my next step would be to bring an actual proposal to you once we get the plans approved and designed.
Hopefully by then, Dr. Bregge will convince Mrs. Marcus.
I will try and visit between now and the next meeting, okay?
We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So for my next item, I'm just going to share a different screen so that I can play this video. this video.
Right now? You want some dialogue?
All right. So, before we get into El Rodeo, we just have a short video to show you of the progress that we've been making at the site. Sorry, let me pull that up. I was hoping to go right to it. Well, there is some sound, but it's just not playing.
Can you just hum what it would have sounded like?
Yes, it sounds like the music at the beginning of the board meetings. The other, Amin, at Fonder Solari, he took a lot of drone footage and put it all together.
It looks so good.
Wow.
It looks fantastic. When did you go, Noah, with CBOC? It looks so good.
Yeah, great angles.
And then we can tell everyone to go on the board meeting and see El Rodeo.
This is the hallway of B, I think.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's beautiful. Thank you.
Just had a tour.
You just had a tour, a virtual tour.
Did you go, Michelle? Did you go to the tour with CBOC?
Neither one of you did.
I went yesterday.
Oh.
All right, Amin, do you want to join me?
I went for both of you the other day.
I...
It's okay.
Yesterday was the board one. I thought yesterday was the day, but maybe because they didn't want to publish it.
I had an H&amp;S meeting yesterday.
On the fence, we want me to. All right, so one of the items we were asked to bring up as a topic of discussion today is the fencing and specifically the chain link fencing around the playground area, the soccer field, and on the other side of the community garden. So, there's several areas that meet up to the wrought iron fencing that is chain link. So, what I did in our presentation is I provided a few photos of some of those areas. This is a chain link fence meeting up with wrought iron and here again. So, this happens in a few different areas at El Rodeo campus and we've been asked to bring up for discussion whether or not we should pay to change the fencing to a black mesh or chain link along with painting all the poles black.
I saw it yesterday and I think it's, it disappears in this color. I think if you paint it black, it's going to stand out a lot. Like, in this way, I thought it was going to be much more noticeable and as I was walking around, I really felt like it disappeared.
I had, I had asked originally to put this on. I didn't feel that it disappeared as much as you do.
I mean, compared to black, I think black would...
I noted that BV has green chain link. I think Horseman has purple, if I'm correct, or it's not, it's not galvanized, whatever Horseman is. I don't think it's galvanized. It's coated. So, that in itself, it's also, I also recognize the fact that it's the exterior fencing of both those properties where this has a lot of wrought iron as its exterior fencing. I still think it downgrades the look of the campus, but there were two other issues that I did want to bring up. The board can weigh in on the fencing as they see fit. I think I would like at least to get a proposal on what it would cost to change the color of the chain link.
Do what with the chain?
Change the color of the chain link.
By change color, do you mean substitute out? You don't mean spray paint it?
No, the poles can be painted, but the chain link part has to be replaced, correct?
And which poles would, are you...
The chain link poles, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, what is it, is it...
Paint them.
I would paint them, yeah. Well, I personally would and I'm not allowed to.
I'll get them painted.
I paint them, I, I mean, listen, you have, you have...
Why don't we all do it?
Your color schemes on the building, or you can go with the white of the building, the same color as some of the handrails are painted, that color. You can go black or you can go red. I don't think you want to go red. So, it's just, it's just, this is what I've noticed. But I do want to bring up my other couple of issues. The community garden is gigantic. There is no way that an elementary school is going to support a community garden. I think that space could be shrunken down and used for play area for the kids, just to pull out the planters and put turf down. And I don't think we need a fence around the community garden as well. I don't know why there was one, but I'm going to let that opinion go. There, the, you have a picture on the first slide of the pavilions, of the shade pavilions. You have a picture of this one?
Yeah, it's part of the video, but yeah, I can go back to that.
Oh, that's the, okay. And ours, it's a still. So, the pavilions have these dropdown marker boards, which, when we discussed them, was not ever part of a board discussion, that there would be these giant marker boards that are blocking the view to the fields. These are, this is access for, we designed this entire field to support the AYSO along with the AYSO and then all of the seating is blocked by these marker boards. And I was wondering if there were ways to put the marker boards, like have them retractable or something, so they can be clicked up into place or removed or brought out if they have to be brought out and added to it for an outdoor classroom. But we know, for the most part, they're not going to be utilized.
Yeah, so we discussed this and it's a point that Sarah brought up on one of our earlier tours and our team's looking at removing the white boards.
Okay.
I don't think adding an option for, to drop down would be feasible at this point.
If they're removable, that would be fantastic. Plus, that little lip thing that hangs down too, I don't think you need that.
Removalment is going to be removed.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could take them off, no, if it's allowed, that's great. Because somebody can always wheel out a marker board.
Yeah.
You know, we have those. Yeah, if you look at this, at this page, here, the first page of El Rodeo, look in the top right corner, you'll see the shade pavilion and there's two giant marker boards that drop down. And they do, they do block a considerable amount of view because when I was on the tour, I...
Are there separate pieces that were installed and can be uninstalled or will there be damage as a result of the removal?
It's right on the other side, so if you have an outdoor classroom.
It, the pieces, the actual shade piece is not the white board. Those, that's something we have to look at as far as how is it designed into the shade and is it easily removed or are we going to have to perform some sort of mechanical cut and put a clean edge over it?
Yeah.
But the white board, which is on the other side, that can be removed.
It's two layers. It's a, it's a white board and it has the panels, so if we want...
So, there was a panel and as a result, you put a white board on the inside to make the interior more useful?
Well, I can tell you, the original purpose was they wanted to create an outdoor learning space. So, this is always part of the design from 10 years ago.
I got you.
I think this is before we were on the board. This is...
Yeah, there was, no, but this was, this would have been, this would have predate, if these go back to the original plans, then that predates, that predates, that's totem, that's totem. Actually, HMC goes all the way back probably to Bernard's. I mean, that predates, that goes back a long, long time.
It goes back a ways and it was not...
I just think, I think that should have been questioned before it was installed, maybe brought to us and say, what do you guys think about this? I didn't, I thought it was based on developer fee and need for an outdoor classroom. I, I don't think we need, we, in our other shade structures that we put in in other places, we don't have this.
Correct.
So, I think it's antithetical for the purpose of, and plus, these two shade pavilions are the only, like, fixed seating basically for parents, AYSO, you know, PE classroom. It really makes sense to find a way to remove those. Okay, moving on, last thing. You don't have a picture of this, but on the shade area outside of kindergarten, there's that shaded area outside of kindergarten?
Yes.
Hopefully, you guys all saw it on the tour. There is, there's vertical tubular steel posts, right, that are structural?
Pile-aster concrete.
What?
Pile-aster concrete columns you're talking about.
Yeah, the columns, but, but out of, there's three lines of those posts and only the middle line has these columns on it. And they take up an incredible amount of room and I think they, for the most part, for me, they don't make sense because all they do is take up room and you, we didn't even put them on the outside, you know, like the last row that's, that's toward the outside. They're right in the middle of the three rows. So, I just, I didn't understand that and I'm just wondering what's, if that's a big problem to remove those, if that's what the deal with those are. Because with kindergartners out there, they're, you know, and their little hands are going to get all of those white columns, it's going to be a cleaning nightmare, probably.
Oh, yeah, so this sounds very familiar. But, yes, we, we can look at removing them. There's actually a structural column inside of the, the column covers, but we just worry about what the finish is going to look like when we remove them. And we'd probably have to use quite a bit of patching in order to remove them.
And also, there is a piece sitting on top of that.
Right.
We're removing this, it needs to go back to DSA.
Right.
Okay, well, I don't want to, I don't want to incur that. I just, I just...
And it's kind of on the surface, again, at the bottom of this, there is like concrete base built that, that needs to be grinded.
So, it's not, it's not a wraparound after the fact? It was built in with it?
It's a, those, those are two pieces of pile-aster concrete that was installed, but that was, because it was part of the DSA design, that's now the whole thing is supporting something on the top. If we are eliminating that, we need to go back to DSA.
So, those pile-aster columns are structural?
It's not a structural, but again, as part of the whole thing, it was submitted to DSA. But if we are removing that, we have to go to DSA and again, prove that this is not supporting anything. Because there is a piece of like...
There's a beam or something.
There's a beam, there's a black...
I understand the design concept behind it. They tried to match the classic look and combine that with a modern, and these are not anything that was added recently. It was all...
These were the plans, these were the plans beforehand.
The decade of plans, yes.
So...
I just, I, I would have hoped that somebody would have caught that earlier on and say, hey, this is a little outlier here. Is there something, do you guys want to make an adjustment on this?
Yeah, and one thing I did notice is I think the intent was to match the columns that are outside of building B.
But all those plans were approved by the board prior, right?
Yeah, but it's...
I mean, when you guys were meeting, Don Blake was bidding this out for the final...
But the materials...
They had to have been looking at all of these things. Because even the garden was there before.
I don't think that whole community garden was that big. I don't remember it ever being that big.
And nobody changed it. I think it was part of the plans from before.
Things that have come along in the past, even from high school.
Yeah, they were approved previously by the board, so to bring them back to the board.
There could be creative solutions, like, for example, we have the tiles with Colby's hand on one of them. And so, that could be a fun project for the first TK class or something like that to cover it up.
Management team thought either Pro West brought it up or, or...
What, replace the tiles?
You know...
Yeah, but there's, right, but when you're removing stuff, it doesn't affect a max
price usually, especially if it's not structural. I, I'm, listen, I'm bringing stuff up. The board can give direction as they see fit.
But can we talk about the community garden for a minute?
Sure.
I just am curious to know, like, for example, the TK kids recently grew chicks and it's something that they enjoyed. So, what's the instructional purpose? Is it something that could serve instruction? Is it something that could be fun and could be used to teach and educate? Or, you know, I just would be interested to know...
Like, how did it get there in the first place? Because it was all there beforehand?
Yes.
Right. And it had been approved, obviously, multiple times because you did the final price with TCDS and Pro West, so they had to look at this in detail to be able to provide what it would be.
For the use of the community garden and primary TK and so on, it might be something that the older kids might be avail themselves of it also. And they could have partnerships in building and gardening and so on.
Sarah's here, so...
Yeah.
I'm just saying that these are some options.
Yeah, there's some programs out there as well. You've been on some of the emails, I think, where some people would like to talk to us about some curriculum pieces, about growing items for, you know, consumption during lunch and that being part of the, you know, of our curriculum.
Herb garden.
Yes.
I mean, now that it's there, it seems like you should try it and then you can always make adjustments.
Before you remove it, let's see whether we can do something with it.
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying.
Hi. Hi. There's 26 really large beds in there, so...
I hope you have gardening gloves.
We, we have gardening gloves. Look, I'm going to El Rodeo for the very first time, so it's really important to me to keep some of the history that's been there. That is really important to me. But sort of what Sophia said, sorry, I heard you say it, that it hasn't always been there. It came like as a response to going into bungalows and to bringing back some of the greenery that happened when people moved out of the building. And it was kind of a small garden. It had about four beds there up against one bungalow. We currently have a lovely, incredible rose garden that's maintained by our staff, by Mr. Haas' staff. And then also, a teacher volunteers with some parents. It has four beds in there. So, it's not to say that we'll get rid of it. We will absolutely incorporate it into a curriculum, but that isn't, that's like real, like real estate. Do you know what I mean? So, it's a really valuable piece of real estate that could be used in play for our little people as opposed to a community garden. And there's this beautiful idea around a community garden that would, we thought maybe it was maintained by the community, but really, it's maintained by us. We have an incredible science program. I know that it will be working for science at whatever size that it is, but because of where it is, it may benefit us to shrink it a bit, as Mr. Margot said, so that we get more play space. Like, we could put in a Gaga court in the already elevated cement and kids could play Gagas, like dodgeball in a pit, just for anybody who's watching who doesn't know what that is. And we could play that with the little people. We could use just an area that we can do sidewalk chalk with the little kids. We could do four-square or hopscotch and that. So, we wouldn't have to do anything necessarily structural in terms of the actual cement slab that's already there by making it play space. So, whatever you decide, we will support it academically, but it's 26 as opposed to like four.
No, when I saw it, I thought, that's a lot of gardening.
Four times six.
I was just curious how it came to be because it clearly had been on the plans before any of us got here and had been someone's idea somewhere down the road and approved.
It's an amazing, I'm sorry, it's an amazing, amazing school. I'm so thankful to everyone who's working on it, but we sort of sit in a meeting and But we sort of sit in a meeting and we've all inherited some plans, and now when we see them up and running, we're seeing some of the things that Mr. Margot brought up and some of the things that you are bringing up, that we're seeing, um, what is it going to look like in action? Like, as we're there and we're starting to talk about bringing 600 kids onto campus. There's some concerns that we have in a couple areas as we're seeing plans come into life. So even though like on a piece of paper and flat, it looked amazing, same thing happened with furniture. Like, this looked amazing, and then when we see it, we're like, oh, we need an additional bookshelf, sort of like what happened as people moved into the high school.
Mm-hmm.
I would be interested to know if you have some cost-effective solutions, you know, to bring-
Well, we have some, as far as the fencing, we have some rough estimate. It's going to be around $80,000 to $100,000 if we want to change all the fences, fabric, and paint the posts to black. Um, so that's, uh, we can just get it narrowed down to an exact number, but this is the ballpark of the cost. It's going to be the ballpark of the cost if you want to change the fabric to the black. And, uh, my recommendation about a lot of these changes is at some point, we have to finish this project. If we keep changing and changing, it's just going to be an open-ended. So some of these, if we can live with them, let's just live with it for a year and just plan for it close to the next summer. And just say, okay, there are stuff that now, and there's going to be more items that is not going to work.
I would like to add to that about the garden. I mean, I'm not in charge of wipe it out right away, because I think you need to see what possibilities there are. And granted, it's quite large right now, but there may be ways that we can modify it for whatever we need, what are the needs, and so on. And how's the usage going?
Right.
I really feel that to make, and I agree with you, I, my thinking is, we want to get it done, and we want to be able to move in. And we can make some of these changes later. Why are we trying to make wholesale changes now? Let's see how it works, unless they're absolutely necessary.
Like Horseman, you know, the exterior, the additional exterior gate has evolved.
Right.
And we had a more robust proposal earlier this year, and now we're about, you know, we're focusing on something a little more minimal that gets it done. So I don't mind living in the space for a minute.
Right. I mean, I think, um, for the aesthetic part of changing the fencing, I would wait on that and see how you feel about it once everyone's in. Um, with the garden, um, it's there. So it, for me, it's like, it's already there, see how it is. Um, move in and get the programming in place, because you may find that you still want it to go, but you may actually find, Sarah, that there's something else you want it for. So to decide today, why not wait till you get in? Because you may say, actually, I want a play structure there, or I want, um, there may be something else. So maybe since it's already there, it's better to get in, start, and then that gives you a chance to see how the space is working for you throughout the school. And you may decide completely different, a different solution that works better for you. There may be something that prioritizes, uh, that's more of a priority than even the garden there. You may move the garden, for all you know. So I just might wait since it's there, unless you really feel that it's impeding the program.
I don't have any problem waiting to see where we are. My question is, like, because it's labeled the community garden, and we're starting with it large and opening with, to the community, does that feel like we're taking something away from the community, as opposed to making the change? That's my only question. I'm happy to wait.
Can we rename it? Can we?
It's the Elrodeo Garden.
Eagles Garden, or something like that. The Eagle Patch, or I don't, you know what I mean? Something more custom to Elrodeo. Paging Rebecca.
We, um, we inherited the name Community Garden, because that's what it was called at Elrodeo when it was created.
School Community Garden.
Maybe Sophia can speak to it. I don't know. Has anybody?
I mean, it could be-
I don't think that this, that community garden was actually tended to by the kids themselves, so the community, with the, the community of the kids by every class. So, you know, I don't understand why we're getting hung up on this. I just feel that we need to move in. We need to see what we're going to be doing, what we're going to need, how we're going to use it. Right now, leave it, so it is. We're not opening it to the community. It's the community of the school.
Great.
So I-
I feel comfortable with that, too.
But duly noted on your concern of this is not an open invitation to the community. I'm with you there.
And, and I appreciate that you're sensitive.
We're not like selling lots of like, who wants to plant?
I, I think, I appreciate that you're sensitive to the history, too, because I think that's something that we've, that you've been really good about, being really sensitive to that history, so.
Okay, so just to skip it along a little bit, um, thank you, colleagues, for letting me entertain some of those thoughts. But I think we might all be agreement on the pavilion, the marker boards and stuff. We're going to look into removing that.
Yeah, we're looking into removing the marker boards.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else on-
Uh, there is a few other things, um, that we can be quick with. Uh, one thing is there's, uh, a question about the trees along the perimeter of the fence, uh, along Wilshire. Uh, we just wanted to make a statement that there are, is, there are trees there, especially on the corner of Whittier and Wilshire, and also going up Whittier. Um, it may not look like they're too full right now, but they still need some room to grow. Uh, going along with what Mr. Amin was saying, I propose that we just kind of let it evolve right now. And then if we determine, maybe a year from now, we do need more trees, or when construction starts, if trees might be more beneficial, that we add them at that time.
You're going to be putting up a, uh-
Yes, and we'll be putting up a net to prevent soccer balls from flying onto Wilshire.
How about from people seeing in, though? Is that part of the?
So that's a mesh.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then there will be a mesh screen going on the wrought iron fencing, uh, similar to the other schools, so you can't see through the fence.
Can, can we talk a little bit about the net? Um, because on the Wilshire side, it's a little interesting, you know, it's really-
It can be fenced. It can be like turning fence-
A net that feels like, that serves as a fence as well?
Yeah.
So do you have an estimate of how high that net would go? Is it?
I don't, I mean, we would ask maybe our IYSO partners to get their input.
Something high enough, meaning that balls could not go in and people could, balls could not go out and people could not-
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I like it.
I was going to mention, over at Beverly Vista, you have that fence that leans in and in its extension of the fence that goes along the sidewalk. That, that's what I'm thinking.
We would do something similar, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And to Wilshire Boulevard, that can be a problem.
Oh, boy. Yeah.
And I just want to add, there are other changes that we are working with Mrs. Gaber to make sure those are happening. It's not like that, the functionality of the school is the most important thing for all of us, to make sure that they are going to be comfortable in that. But the static things, again, those are the things that I want to ask to wait a little bit. Budget-wise, time-wise, is just, we need to have like a end and close, and close this current contract. It's not fair to our contractor, is that just continue. They are not charging any additional general condition, and we have to just end this project. Those changes can be defined as mini-projects and dealt with like in future next summer.
Okay. Will, do you have an estimate of, I read that the construction across the street is going to be 60 months, five years. Do, do you know anything about 60 months from when, or do you have any estimate on when they're starting? Just because, and this is for a future conversation, but the soot from construction, you know, could be significant. I'm just curious to know if anybody knows.
Uh, I don't know exactly. Um, I've heard some dates being thrown around, five years or so. Um, there are other people who say it might take longer. I just can't speak to that. Uh, as far as the dust goes, I believe even, um, Amin mentioned the other day to someone, that they're, they're almost out of the ground now. So any construction they do will be going up, and there's not going to be a lot of like dirt or dust being kicked up because of the project.
If I may, again, they have to have this mitigation plan approved by the city. They are in the, like, center of residential areas, like, and the neighbors all are going to complain, so they are obligated to do this, do like dust mitigation plan, otherwise their permit wouldn't be approved. So, again, that's something that I am just speaking out of experience. Now, I don't know any detail of that, it's just, but, uh, again, if they didn't have all of plans for all of this in place, they wouldn't be able to pull their permit from the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the last thing is, again, some good news. Uh, we are, we have started our procurement for Building C, the athletic facilities building. Um, so we had the RFPQ out, uh, on February 8th. I am delighted and very happy to let you know that we got four, uh, state of qualification from four very reputable contractors. Each one of these four companies, I consider them a leader in the educational construction. So Blatch, CW Driver, Kemp Brothers, and Soonerton. So we are reviewing, and hopefully, in your April board meeting, we are going to come forward, including me and the committee from the district, our team and the committee from the district, when I'm saying we are reviewing, not only us. So, uh, hopefully, for the next board meeting, we are going to bring in front of you a recommendation for approval of the pre-construction services contract for the lease leaseback, to enter a lease leaseback contract with one of these contractors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm happy to hear it's moving.
Yes, and there is one other great piece of information. I don't know if Amin wanted to share it?
Sure.
Some news we heard today.
Yeah, I forgot about that last part. Uh, Elrodeo project was submitted by Fonder Solari to Construction Management Association of America Southern California Chapter for an award. The project was selected as the best educational project in the category of the above $50 million in the Southern California, and is going to be awarded by Construction Management Association of America.
That's such great news. Thank you.
How much was that?
Congratulations.
Did we get money for that? I didn't hear.
No, you are going to get a trophy for that.
Everyone gets a trophy.
And not everyone is getting that.
That's great news. Thank you.
All right.
And that's all we had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2324-12, maintaining safe digital citizenry?
I'll second it.
And I just, there were just a couple of typing things, so when they format the final resolution for printing, I wanted to just bring it to your attention.
The beauty of you.
I know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna noize it. Um, I'll make this as quick, does anybody have the resolution in front of them that I can just? No, 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 like, that can make the changes? No, that can make the changes. Yeah. Do, you do? Okay, so, um, I'm going to, the third whereas, there is an extra space. Um, after the word ages, comma, can be generated. It's in the second line, just remove that space. The fourth whereas, there is between, um, addresses and violence, there's an extra space. The fifth whereas, it's, um, about online has an extra space. That's the fourth line, the third line?
Oh, the third line assets.
About online safety and citizenry?
Oh, yes.
Okay, extra space there for that. And then the, the sixth one, where it says laws, regulations, and technology? You, you don't need a comma, because you have the ampersand. So it's just laws, regulations, and technology.
Almost all wrong.
It's not wrong, but it's, you don't need it.
It could be done either way.
Could be done either way, but it's- That's the sixth whereas. It says laws, regulations, and technology. No, it's not wrong, but it's-
So you don't want to comment after?
I, I don't. I could be out-commited on this one, but it's, it's not my practice. The wonderful English department at Beverly Hills High School taught me otherwise. So there. Anyway, those are my only changes, so I'm, I just wanted to make that to the, to the thing.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. So you made a motion. Um, I wanted to, before we vote on it, um, just wanted to say a few things about this. So, um, I'm really happy that we were able to put forward, uh, this, um, digital citizenry resolution. Uh, when we were dealing with the crisis at its peak, which I would say was about, I want to say, four weeks ago. Uh, one of the first thoughts that I had as a psychologist who works in the schools daily is that when there is a transgression in something that is as serious as this, of course, we have to look at the developmental implications. And we know that we, uh, definitely, um, offer guidance, and we, we stand by excellence in education. And by that token, we definitely want to maintain that we instruct our students on this rather new development, which is artificial intelligence. And I also want to say that artificial intelligence, um, while this was an example of how damaging and scary and bad it can be, um, you know, when it intersects with, with many adolescents, uh, there AI is something that I say is certainly not going to go away. There are school districts in the LA area that actually are taking it a step further. Um, I know LAUSD is piloting the idea of having artificial intelligence that actually helps as an assistant, or artificial, um, an AI assistant. And they've taken 55,000 kids, and they have given them this prototype. And this AI can wake them up in the morning, can say, hey, Suzie, you didn't do so well on this English test. Here's some links for you to, um, practice a little more. So it's really finely tuned to, um, help kids. So while it is a dangerous, it can be very dangerous, it's also something that continues to be baffling, and something that we, as, as people who want to be excellent in education, is something that we must manage. But I wanted to bring forth this, um, resolution, because I want us to be aware that we continue to educate our students. And although this is just a piece of paper as a resolution, it sums up and unites all of us in the continued process of, of guiding our students um, in, um, helping those who were victimized by this, and moving forward in a thoughtful, a thoughtful way in these modern times. So I thank you all for helping me with this and putting, and that we all put this together. Um, and we can call for the vote unless there's any further thoughts. Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the resolution passes.
I will make a motion for the approval of the Resolution 2023-2024-013, ordering governing board member election November 5th, 2024.
And I will second, and I just wanted to add, um, my signature line is in there twice. Is one of them suppo- Supposed to be, okay.
I'm sorry, who made the first motion?
Mrs. Marcus, ma'am.
Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to communication from the board members, um, and such as meeting reports. Um, Mr. Margot, anything? Oh, sorry, Miss Sophia, anything? Okay.
No meeting reports. Um, noruse started last week, so happy noruse to everyone celebrating.
Okay, thank you. Moving along.
Um, I want to thank the, um, the school, I guess the ASB, for the blood drive. I actually was here for it this year. I was able to give this year. And I, and I hadn't, I hadn't given blood since October, so I was cleared, and I did it. And there were so many students giving, it was really nice. I think they met their quota, right? Do you do that? Yeah, they met their quota. So that was terrific for benefiting UCLA Medical Center. Um, just quickly, I attended the Human Relations Commission last week, um, gave my report, as well as, um, they have an event coming up on May 30th called Critical Conversations. That's their next big event that they, they put on during the year. They had the Kindness Week back in February. But just to put in your calendars, May 30th, it's a panel. I know the whole community is invited to that. You changed the date?
It's not the Wednesday, it's the Tuesday.
It's not the Wednesday, it's the Tuesday. So that would be the, what, the 29th or something, or the 28th?
It's going to be the 28th.
28th?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Tuesday, May 28th.
Hot off the press. Thank you, Commissioner Krausha. There you go. Um, and, and finally, I would like to say, because fortunately or unfortunately, I will not be attending the city installation next week, when our own Mrs. Wells ascends to the higher plane of city council. Um, and, uh, it's been a very interesting three and a quarter years working with you. Um, and, yeah, it's, it's, it's a testimony that it's okay to disagree, folks. It really is. We're not, we disagreed on the topic today, and we're back with our banter. It's fine. It's just, it's not people, it's things. We should put that always in perspective. It's issues. If you keep it about issues, you can govern a lot smoother. Um, but I, I've appreciated your tenacity, um, your, your meteoric rise in here, in the city, and, um, and, and for a while, at least, the chair will be empty next to me, so I'm going to be putting my stuff here instead of on the floor. Thank you very much for that. I'm going to re- I think HR is here, Judy. Careful with that, okay? So, so thank, thank you, Mary. Well, you know, we both stepped into this thing during COVID and, um, and together, and, and a lot of things have gotten done in the, in the last three and a quarter years. So for all those things that we did, uh, ride that wave together, thank you, um, as we supported each other through a lot of the issues, you know? Um, people love like sticking on the one or two issues that, that we disagreed with, but if you look at our voting record over the past three and a quarter years, there may be two or three votes that we disagreed with, which is, which is nothing. And we do, and we got an incredible amount done. We, you know, opened B1 and B2, and, and, um, we're close to, to finishing, you know, a year away from the high school. We're opening Elrodeo. We made massive changes, um, at, at Horseman over the last, you know, three years. So it's, it's terrific work. Um, and we did do the evaluation system with the union, which is one of, one of our, our biggest things. So thank you, thank you, Mrs. Wells, for your time here, and I wish you all the best, and I'll, and I'll see you on the other side.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Noah. I, um, I, it is my last board meeting officially, um, and I want to thank this board, my colleagues, and Dr. Bregy, and our incredible team. Um, I just, uh, when I first came on the board, as Noah said, it was COVID, and everyone was in their corners. And it was so divisive, um, from a political time and from just everything going on. And I'm so proud of our board and the work that we've done together, uh, to bring our community together. And it really started with the board and with this team to come together first, and then to lead from there. And I think that, um, I'm proud of the work that we've done. We couldn't have done it without being together. I think all of us made such incredible contributions to make this happen. I thank Fonder Solari and Will Karad and Raphael for making it possible for Elrodeo to open. Quite frankly, I don't think it would have opened had they not come in and provided that true oversight from construction management. And I'm very proud that that is opening and that we have a plan to open the high school. Um, but I'm just mostly, I, I've enjoyed so much working with this team of people and our community. I appreciate so much our community and all of our parents, um, for coming together as well. I think the lesson that we've learned is that, um, and especially, I'm going to, I'm going to, before I say that, um, you know, we're moving into an election and this November, and we just voted on that. We're losing three of our board members, and we'll, we'll have a change. And we just went through an election in the city, and it got, you know, it got ugly, quite frankly. And it was disappointing to me, because we worked so hard to bring our community together. And Beverly Hills and our school district is very unique. We're not like all the other school districts. We're not laying off all our employees this year. We're not in those situations. And I think that we are a different school district, and we're a different community. And I am really proud of our community for coming together after COVID, because we went through a very difficult time together. And I think what we learned is when we listen to each other, when we respect each other, when we really want to learn what people's points of view are and why. Uh, we are so much stronger together, and we all want the same thing. And I think we really learned that from COVID, and I really remind everybody to please keep that in mind as we move into the elections um, this coming November, because I could see that, um, the wave of the, you know, the political wave that will wash over us as a city and as a school district can try and pull us apart. But we're stronger than that, we're better than that, and, and we want the same thing. And we just have to remember that, that, you know, we all are- And we just have to remember that, that, you know, we all are here for good reasons. And, you know, I'll be on the city's side doing the same thing and pulling for our school district. And it is fire, police, and schools. And schools, to me, as you know, are very important in our school community. And I'm looking forward to be on that side, doing the same work as well. So thank you all very much for this incredible experience.
Thank you so much for that. And Noah, thanks for your kind words. I just want to say, you know, it's been a very special experience to be, to be a board member with you after having been a parent that you represented. And I thank you so much for the first time that you called me to hear me out on a few things. And it's very true, at that time, everybody was just screaming from their corners. And that's not the approach that you took. And I think that you were really amazing in listening and taking the temperature down on things and being laser focused on a vision. And so I thank you for what you did for my family when I was just a mom. And I thank you for being a great colleague for me as I've come on the board and really setting a standard for excellence and integrity. And I appreciate that. And I'm happy for you that you're going to be on city council, and I'm happy for us that you're going to be on city council. So I wish you the best of luck, and I know you'll be there for this district and we'll be here for you as well. So see you soon.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I was going to do that for you.
I'm trying to remember. They used to put a sign there, press the button. Well, before I start with you, Mary, I have a few things that I did attend. First of all, I was going to mention the PTSA meeting that I attended last week, but I can drop that item because my friend over there, thank you for bringing all those things up. I love to hear it from you. It's better from you. I went to the CBOC meeting last, I think, Thursday. Well, it really wasn't a meeting. It was hello and goodbye as far as the meeting was concerned. We really got down to having a tour of El Rodeo, which of course I have seen it many times, what they had Principal Advisory Committee there, they had other, they had the AYSO people there. It was a conglomerate of members of the community, stakeholders that went on the tour and they were all very, very impressed. I did not find anything that I did not like except for one item, and I brought it to their attention. And that is that I think on the steps, there should be stripping on every step, but that's, I'm an older lady that needs more protection. Yesterday, I attended the Health and Safety Commission meeting. The fire department was there. They gave their metrics of what's going on. Interestingly enough, there was a 90% increase in calls due to the storms and mudslides and water in the house and so on and so forth. They really had their hands full last February, so there was a 90%. There was a report from Christopher Paulson, who's the head of Human Resources. He was discussing the homeless situation and how they're handling it and how they're trying to get nonprofit organizations to help with funding and so on, like the Jewish Family Service and what have you. And they talked about some housing projects to place the homeless. The police report was about the same. The crime was down, interestingly enough. They addressed a couple of incidents that happened in January and February. The most interesting part of yesterday's meeting was a presentation from a lady named Emily Williams. She's the CEO of UCAAN. It's an Awareness Family Resistance Resilience Network. It's an organization which screens patients for adverse childhood experiences and how these toxic stress events affect their life as an adult. It's a part of UCLA and University of California at San Francisco. It's called ACIS, Adverse Childhood Experiences, and it's something that I think we might want to look into and program, come partner with them on some of those things. I'm going to talk to Mrs. Collins Williams about it. It sounds very good. They spoke about awareness, prevention, and the resources, and then training certified people to promote and healing the resiliency. It was quite an interesting thing. I would like to just say a couple of words about the Interact Club. The four things that I take away, it nurtures positive values, provides opportunities to demonstrate leadership, it creates a sense of community and civic engagement, and it's dedicated to service both locally and internationally. And I was very impressed by the amazing enthusiasm that the advisor, who was once a teacher, wants to bring it back to the way it was once before, and her name is Joni Garrett, and she is really working hard to build it up again. So I wanted to say that. Now, Mary, what can I say to my colleague? I don't know that there's any words that I can express how wonderful it's been working together with you. We had some very difficult decisions to make in the beginning. We made them. We held our heads high. You have amazing insights as to how things will look and work, and you make some incredible statements about things that I really took a lot of interest in. I know that my support for you was unwavering during the election, and I can only tell you that I look forward to working with you on both sides of the fence, as you mentioned, because I think we both have something to come together on. So I am really thrilled that you were elected, and I know there are some opposition to that thought, but I stood firm. And I just want to wish you all the luck in the world. I don't think that there's going to be a moment that my support of you will be in doubt. So I want to wish you all the luck in the world, and I know I'm going to see more of you. So thank you.
So Mary, we did start this whole adventure right in the middle of COVID, and that was really something. And it was wonderful to be a co-newbie with you on this board as we braved all these things and trying to get to know each other with masks and all and, you know, all the strange things that came out of COVID. And in working here, and this is the first major board I've been a part of, and I don't think that was true for you, and I've definitely learned a lot from you, not just procedurally, but how to carry one's thoughts and feelings and convictions in a true and confident way. Your understanding of civics that intersect with construction, that intersect with finances, is very inspirational to me. And it's a depth of understanding that is very much an asset. It was truly an asset for our board, and I know that you will go on and do great things with the city. So I don't think we won't not see you. We'll certainly see you. And I do wish I could be there in person for the installation, but I will be out of town, so. But thank you. Rochelle, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one thing. I want to wish everybody a happy, safe travel wherever you're going during the next week for your spring break and return in health. Before we close the meeting, I would like to discuss the next meeting date as they, or I think it's the next meeting date. It happens to fall on the second night of Passover. I don't know what that.
April 23rd is the next date, and it falls on the second night of Passover. Okay? So you want to discuss that? I don't know if it can be changed at this point.
I just bring it up. I don't know whether you want to consider, it's also my husband's ass. My husband died that day.
I'm sorry. Hear that.
So I don't know what you want to do. If you want to see if we can arrange a different day, it's up to you. I just, I'll be happy to, I'll meet that date. It's not a problem as far as I'm concerned, but I just wondered if anybody else is affected by it.
Do take was the second night or last night?
Second.
It's the second night of Passover, Passover the second night.
I mean, I can, I recognize that it's the second night of Passover, and it's not ideal, but given that, you know, we've made that commitment, I can be there.
Yes, I feel similarly.
And it's okay, and it will be okay. I will note that, as a heads up to Dr. Bregy, we're not off on the first day of Passover, so we might see an attendance issue on that date. But we do know that going forward, it's going to be honored in a calendar, and so it's not going to be an issue going forward in terms of. Yeah, just, you know, respecting our community's customs and also, you know, dealing with our absenteeism issue. So it is what it is, and we are going to evolve and do better for the next time around.
Well, could you remind me what the issue with the 16th was? April 16th? Was it? Dr. Bregy?
Well, the science fair is there now, so that's a problem now. But I don't, I don't remember why this was, maybe Ms. Kraus knows.
It's hard because we don't come back on spring break until the 9th.
Right.
And that would be the day we would have to post for the next day.
Oh, we wouldn't have anything.
And we're here for the week before to do any more, so.
Okay. Understood.
Yeah, we've done that before in the past too. So if it can work, it's probably better because we're going to have something to discuss because it's, we're going to be going over three weeks.
Is there an issue moving it to the 24th? To the Wednesday? Is that an issue?
If that works.
Is that better for anyone?
Wait, Wednesday, the 24th?
Yes.
Wednesday, April 24th.
I'm okay either way. You guys let me know.
Maybe we would have to check availability with the high school.
Right.
Well, I think because we approve the agenda, and this is part of the agenda at the meeting, we're going to have to go through the normal channel of rescheduling a meeting through your office.
Right.
If it's going to happen, so we can't even do it right now.
Right, it's just helpful to.
But I do recognize the point that was made, so if we can try to address that, that might be beneficial.
And with that, do you mean to check availability for the 24th?
Yeah, to see if there's a, yeah, just to see if there's another date.
Yes. So I just want to add two really quick. You know, this is, one of my biggest frustrations is always that, you know, people think that they know what we do and, you know, and it may look different when people are kind of looking from the outside in. These jobs are really hard. The decisions that we make are hard because everything we do is connected to working with children. And so it's just, it's very, very tough. And, you know, I appreciate Mrs. Wells so much, working with you over the years. So many highlights I know have already been talked about, but certainly strategic planning has taken a different level than it ever has before, for the better. And I think that you've been a real model for us when it comes to, when we have made some mistakes and we have along the way, that your mantra has always been to, let's move forward and learn from the mistakes, and I really like that. You know, our jobs as administration is to bring recommendations to you, what we believe is in the best interest of the school district. But, you know, you have the hard job of being elected officials and have to vote on that. And it doesn't necessarily always have to go with our recommendation, but I feel like if there is an issue, there's always been somewhere in the middle where we've met, and I think that you've had a lot to do with that. So I absolutely want to thank you for that. The relationship that we have with the city, it's just irony that we're in a position where we've increased our relationship with the city over the years, and now, you know, you're going to be just changing bhusd.org to BeverlyHills.org. You know, everything else stays the same. So, you know, I just find that very ironic. So I've enjoyed immensely having you as one of my five bosses. But as of April 2nd, since I do live here as a resident on North Palm Drive, you start working for me on April 2nd.
I will join you.
Now you get to comment all the time.
And I've got all kinds of issues with the woman in apartment 101 on the first floor I'll be talking to you about.
I'll be looking forward to your public comment.
Great, I'll be there.
Thank you, Michael. I really, I just, I can't say enough how much I appreciate our community here at BHUSD, and it's been an incredible learning experience for me as well. And I want to thank each of you for that. It's been really great, and I will always treasure this time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Write often. Okay. Okay. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting.